Good evening, folks. Let's get this moving. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting, May 20th, 2019. Mr. Calavano?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion for the closed and public meeting minutes of May 1st, 6th, 8th, and 14th?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here. Oh, yes. Sorry.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigsscales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Student Liaison Report.
Okay. We don't have too much to say this time. We just want to announce that we're wrapping up the process of picking the new liaisons, and hopefully we'll have them here with us next meeting. So, looking forward to introducing them. And we want to promote the Italian Hispanic night here at West Orange High School on May 31st in the turnoff cafeteria. Students have prepared song, dance, there's going to be a dinner served, and everyone's been working really hard on it for a week, so we really encourage the community, it's open to the whole community, to come and show some support for the West Orange High School Italian and Hispanic programs.
And that was the 31st at what time?
31st.
We'll find it. All right. Anything else?
Oh, sorry. She's 6:30.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mendez, Superintendent Report.
Good evening. We're going to begin with an update on indoor air quality and water quality. I'm going to ask our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Robert Siggi, to provide that update.
Okay. Let's start with the indoor air quality for the schools. We have done a investigative survey on what are the options for our units. We've identified about eight alternatives, including putting fans in to the classrooms, our rooftop units, looking at just replacing the unit vents in kind, repairing them, replacing them with heating, ventilation, air conditioning units across the district, and although some options are less expensive, they're still expensive. We're talking about millions of dollars to do a lot of this. The indoor air quality at this time of the year is very favorable. The concern is usually during the winter months when the classrooms are enclosed, when our windows are closed, so we're in a good part of the year, but needless to say, we need to do something. We've investigated doing repairs. We've spent about $84,000 so far to date on 17 unit vents that we've repaired. The unit vents can be repaired, but that's only repairing the airflow into the classroom and the ventilation part of it. Does not address any of the heating side issues like coils and valves and so forth if they're already repaired. So, it's kind of putting a Band-Aid on an open wound, but it did bring down the air, indoor air quality levels of CO2 that were actually CO that was in there, and so consequently it's gotten better. So, we've done our investigative part of it. Now, we're just looking to see where we're going to go in the future with expending money and budgeting for those type of repairs. Okay? So, we've come a long way with it, like I said, and the high school Hazel and Mount Pleasant were the three schools we were test sites for doing their repairs, and we've shown that the repairs do work. Okay? On the Legionella, we've come a long way with Legionella. I can happily say that tomorrow the high school can start using their water fountains. We just got the results today. Out of 28 water fountains, we still have minor, minor bacteria in three of the 28, so we're not going to turn those on tomorrow. We're going to look at possibly replacing those to get the water quality down to non-detected in those three. So, what we've done so far with Legionella in all of our schools, we still have persistent concerns here at the high school, low levels compared to what we had originally back in July of 2018. We've done some random testing throughout all of the schools. We have Edison and the high school still with some concerns. I should have the water results for the water fountains by the end of this week for Edison School with, hopefully with the same results. We recently tested the water fountains. We had some levels of concern with bacteria. We were using the water bottles to offset the drinking of the water fountains, and then we did a concentration of cleaning, and our retest showed that out of 28, only three still have very low levels. What do I mean by low levels? Ideal is to have no Legionella bacteria, but there's two levels of bacteria, a high level and a low level. The high level is what can get you sick. The low level is not the bacteria that can get you sick. So, again, we're trying to get non-detected, but again, we're getting to a point where it's a lot better than where it was a year ago. We've done a lot of, start, we, the culprit at Redwood School was that the water temperatures in the hot water tanks were about 100 degrees. We need them at 140. All of those hot water tank settings have been set at 140. That increased the temperature, that kills the bacteria, that helped with our hot water side of the building. We did a lot of investigating for what they call dead ends, where piping is not used that often, and we've taken a lot of those areas and repaired them. The areas of concern with drinking the water, wherever we had plottable water, meaning in our kitchens or in our cafeterias, all those have proved to be non-detectable right now by changing out faucets. All of the aerators with aerates the water where it becomes a mist where you can now breathe it in, because again, this disease is a, or the bacteria is one that's inhaled, not ingested. So, we took all the aerators off of our faucets, which now minimizes the chances of the water being aerated, all of our showers. We've eliminated our showers to the point where only ones that are used. So, if we have a bank of 12, only four now are being used. They have filters on them, so the water's being filtered. So, that misting of the shower has been eliminated. So, again, another area of concern where someone can inhale, the mist is minimized or eliminated, pretty much eliminated. On the water fountains, we put filters so that we could filter water going into the water fountain. We found that the reason why we're getting higher readings is that the storage tanks that were holding the water and refrigerating that water was the problem where the bacteria was sitting. That has been cleaned out, and that has been done. The cooling tower is on a water treatment. All of our tests that we've taken on our cooling tower have become back negative, so it's non-detectable in our cooling tower. And that pretty much are those areas that we've tested and confirmed that the water is clean. And the last thing that we're doing right now, which we have, are water management plan. We have two of them, one for the high school and one for Edison, and we have smaller water management plans for each of our other buildings, which primarily contains or is consisting of flushing the systems at least five times a year, predominantly in the summer when the buildings are inactive. The water temperatures build up in the school, and that's where the harbored bacteria within the piping can grow. So, by flushing, that minimizes the growth and minimizes the hazard of Legionella growing. By also changing the filters in the schools that have showers, eliminating the aerators, we only have one cooling tower in the district that is being treated at the high school. We only have one hot tub that's at the high school. All of those things have been addressed and minimized to where either the Legionella has been eliminated, or it's at the low grade and very, very low numbers for the Legionella.
Want to start with Ms. Trigsscales for more questions?
Yes. Thank you so much. So, in addition to the flushing that will happen five times per year and changing the filters, how often will we test?
Testing will be random. We haven't decided how much we're going to test. Once we find that there's no bacteria, then it's only in those areas that we found the bacteria that the flushing will help to minimize or keep at a minimum the low-grade bacteria that's in the piping. So, again, if we do it once a year, that'll just confirm that what we're doing is a positive thing, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Because I would imagine staff and parents would want to know that we're testing on a regular basis as well.
Yep.
At least in the beginning?
Yes, in the beginning. Absolutely.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mordecai?
Mr. Siggi, I just want to say thank you for your hard work, but this was a very slow, painful process. I know there's staff who came to every single meeting and asked whether or not the water was safe, and so I thank you for this. Wish it took a lot quicker, and I'm sure we'll get the total at some point from Mr. Calavano as to how much we spent on bottled water. That being said, in your expertise, have you ever gone up for SDA funding? They're looking to get reauthorized now, and we can possibly go out for a ROD grant. I know they fund partially for regular operating districts. Is this the type of thing we would get SDA funding for? Somebody told me it was, but I'm asking you.
They usually do it every five years. They did it three years ago. We applied. We applied for roofs. We did not get it. The money is selective for the ROD grants for the regular operating districts that are out there, so it does come around every couple of years or every five years, and we'll be ready for the next one when it comes around, and we certainly couldn't put this in as an application to get funded for this.
Okay. We should. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
First of all, thank you very much for all your hard work, and will this report be at the website? Because I think that one of the most important things with all of this is communication, communication, communication. There's still perceptions of how long do we have to use bottled water? Do we need to use bottled water? If somebody has a compromised immune system, are they safe? And under what, you know, are there any areas where they're not safe? I think that, you know, these questions still need to be not only clearly answered, but heavily promoted. So, will this report be available?
Yes. If I'm going to talk tomorrow, we'll see what we can put out.
But I would suggest as part of it that you were very clear as to what's safe if you're healthy, and is there anything that's unsafe if you have a compromised immune system?
Agreed.
Okay. Also, we discussed this before, and Ms. Mordecai actually started this some years ago, started a relationship, but Sustainable New Jersey in conjunction with New Jersey School Board Association, when I went for their training, said that we can apply for up to $30,000 per building related to both the air quality and water quality issues, possibly more than that, but they said $30,000 for sure, which certainly won't pay for everything, but every little bit helps, especially if we can bring in a few hundred thousand dollars. So, I believe those will become available in August. We should probably start checking with them by July.
I already did.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Fantastic.
I did two, I do, I did several things. One, to see if we are, we're eligible. All of our schools are registered with
Yes.
The New Jersey
Yes, we are.
That registration never expires. When you go for a certification, those certification credits expire. Okay? But just being registered allows you to be part of that grant program.
Yes.
You don't have to be certified in order to be part of the program, so that's a good positive thing for us. The unfortunate thing is that the grants are not available. Okay? And we investigated, we had our grant writer investigate also, and those grants have all expired. They expired about six months ago.
Really?
So, that grant that you were talking about, 30,000, there's certain ones that come, do every
I thought there was supposed to be a new wave in August, they told me.
Not ready. Not, no.
Okay.
So, they're talking maybe in January.
January now?
Something else, yeah. Yeah.
There is a new wave for August.
Not that we're
We get the alerts. I will
Okay. And I also signed up for the alerts also and have not gotten anything yet, so it's another thing that I did, make sure that I was on there for any alerts that came through, and this way we could react right away and prep ourselves for any of that monies that might be available.
But I'm, thank you for being proactive, for utilizing the grant writer, for getting the alerts and all that, so that when the opportunity does come, whether it's August or January,
Absolutely.
We can take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
Because we can always use more money.
That's for sure.
But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Merklinger?
I don't have any questions. They've all been pretty much answered, but I do want to thank you for all the hard work and the time that you put into it,
Thank you.
And your team put into it as well.
Liaisons, anything? Okay. Just one from me. Will the water management plans for each building include like a regular maintenance schedule so that the filters are being changed?
Absolutely. That's part of the water management plan. We just had a third party review that, Chubb, our insurance company, again, trying to get money to get reimbursed. For all of this is used in a company out in California called Russonomics. Russonomics just got back to us about four days ago, reviewed the water management plan. In that water management plan, there are several options to, for long-term, to try to eradicate the Legionella bacteria within the system. We now are trying to set up a meeting so that we can sit down and see if there are viable alternatives. If not, then we're going to come out with the absolute, this is where we're at, this is as far as we can go for these reasons, and our water management plan will include this. It'll be in writing, and then we can put that out to the public.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from our Math Program 6-8 Committee. Good evening. This evening, the Math Committee is going to present where they are in the process of selecting a math program for grades 6 through 8, led by Mr. Imad Abu-Hakme, the supervisor of math. They will present all of their findings prior to doing so. I just would like to review with the Board and the public where we have been for the past three years. So, in '16, '17, the district began to take a look at the Connected Math Program. The committee was formed to really examine our program materials. It was found by teachers and parents to lack additional practice and resources for the students, and due to lack of resources, the teachers supplemented heavily with Glencoe materials. As a result, a goal was included in our 2016-17 strategic plan to begin to really evaluate math in 6-8 and consider if it was time to move on to a different program. That goal really began with third grade math through geometry, understanding that at the end of this year, next year, our elementary math will also expire on its five-year cycle, and so therefore something, at least minimally, we need to evaluate to see if we're going to continue using everyday math, or if five years later, there's a different program that would better suit our needs. In Year Two, 2017-18, we did establish a formal committee to evaluate the math program, grades three through geometry. The presented, the findings were presented to the Board in June of 2018. Those presentations and findings included what recommendations were coming forward for this year, which was to pilot programs in 6 through 8 for adoption next year. In 2019-20, they also presented all of the findings for the elementary program as well as the 6-8 program. The elementary program recommended at the time to stay as is until the evaluation took place, and 6-8 recommended to begin to look for another program. So, this year, Year Three in 2018-19, this committee was established to take on that task. They arduously looked at different materials, different programs, met with vendors, piloted programs, and are prepared today to make a recommendation to the Board for which program we should adopt in 2019-20. Of the two that they piloted, Ready or Reveal, they went through all of the materials in all of the classrooms in grade 6 through 8 with materials that were provided at no cost to the district by the publishers. And next year, the idea is after the Board vote at our next meeting, that we will move forward and implement the new math program. So, Mr. Abu-Hakme, if you will begin, and I just want to thank this committee for all of your work, all of your diligence, and all of your thoughtful consideration to making sure that we choose the best program for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce the members of the committee who are here today to present. We have Ms. Christina Ferendi. She's a sixth grade teacher. Nicole Yun, an eighth grade teacher. Jessica Anuzi, a ninth grade teacher, and Rachel Gordon, one of the parents, one of the three parents that served in the committee, and Mr. Robert Klimt, the principal of Liberty Middle School. And we start the presentation.
So, in June of 2018, our committee of the Year Two Committee presented its findings at the Board around the CMP program and the criteria for the selection of a new program. The committee recommendations were to explore and pilot and adopt a new program that supported the instructional goals, ensured that the grade level materials met the quality criteria for conceptual understanding, application, and fluency, and made sure that those materials were also engaging to students. That was a key. Ensure that the instructional materials were aligned to the standards, the focus, coherence, and rigor, that they provided more resources for both the teachers and for the students and parents at home, and that the program chosen ensures the assessments align exclusively to the major works of that grade by at least 85%. And as you can see, these are the members of the committee for Year Three. They were also on the committee in Year Two. So, two representatives from each grade level were chosen. We also had our ninth grade teacher, our parents, each principal from the middle school, our supervisors, and our acting assistant superintendent. To ensure that the program we evaluated were quality programs, the following considerations were made. Research completed by Ed Reports and What Works Clearinghouse, alignment to the IMET, which was our evaluation tool last year, and the Common Core Curriculum Standards for Mathematics Curriculum Analysis Tool, an initial committee screening, and review and assessment of the instruction materials with publishers. To effectively evaluate each program, committee members use an evaluation rubric closely aligned to the Math New Jersey Student Learning Standards that measured program features, alignment to standards, vertical alignment, evaluation according to the IMET, pacing for a unit, and pacing for the year, and navigating resources for teachers, students, and parents. In addition, we evaluated sample lesson structures and lesson look-for's. Critical to the committee work was an analysis of lessons and curricular units that considered prerequisite materials and vertical articulation for preceding and subsequent grade level work. For example, when analyzing grade seven lessons, teachers examined prerequisite knowledge from grade six and key understandings and concepts to best prepare students for grade So, the structure of a sample lesson, where we reviewed two lessons, were equations and expressions from grade seven and fractions from grade four. So, teachers from K to eight were involved in this review. Lesson look-for's were how the lesson progressed within each grade and within each unit, how the lesson accounts for prerequisite material, and how it prepares students for future learning, balance of understanding of concepts, analysis of applications, and effective problem solving, utilizing modeling, manipulatives, and technology, how the lesson includes opportunities for teachers to assess learning and modify instruction. Additional overarching considerations were given to assessment, technology, equity, and differentiation. So, in terms of assessment, we also looked for and assessed whether there was formative daily assessment, which is your ongoing assessment. These are the daily things, the check-ins, to see that the students are learning what was intended in that lesson, like your do-nows and exit slips. We looked at the summative assessments, which are your unit assessments or unit tests and quizzes, and its alignment to the high-stakes testing. In terms of technology, we looked at the teacher resources, the student resources, and additional resources. And for equity, we looked at the differentiation support, ELL support, special education support, and cross-curricular opportunities.
The following programs were evaluated by the committee, Everyday Math, Reveal Math, Envision Math, Ready Math, and Eureka Math. And if you notice, that all these programs are either K-8 or K-12, with the exception of Everyday Math, and the reason we included Everyday Math, to make sure that we give our sixth grade all the options to explore and give them the opportunity to see if they want, if they determine better alignment with the elementary or with the upper, and that was, the decision was made, and extra activities with the sixth grade were conducted, and they decided to go with Reveal and drop the Everyday Math. This is very important to notice, because next year, our K-5 committee will come to a conclusion to come and recommend the program after they finish their investigation. Of the five programs that we have here, the two highlighted in yellow are the programs that the committee recommended for piloting for the following reason, or based on the following activities that Mr. Klimt will discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I just wanted to echo Ms. DiMendez and commend not only the committee, the parents and staff, but also the 25 teachers that piloted the program. So, that month-long pilot, which we'll talk about, did involve some very intense PLC, small group discussions on the lessons to make sure they're delivered properly. So, again, this committee did a fantastic job outside of school and in school. So, we did use the evaluation rubric that was mentioned. The rubric, you know, had over at least 15 different categories to measure. At the time of the presentations, the presenters were very patient. We had question and answer session that lasted right to the minute that they were provided. Again, our staff was very well-prepared in advance with questions and ideas and thoughts about all aspects of the program we're looking to utilize. And then again, the survey was the measure and the gauge for how we narrowed down our two pilot programs.
So, the survey asked all the teachers who were present for the presentations and review of the materials what their average rating was on a scale from 1 through 5, and as you can see, Reveal had a score of 4.2 overall, and Ready had a score of 4.0, which were the top two programs, very clearly on top of Envision and Eureka. So, the committee chose to pilot these top two programs, Reveal and Ready.
In preparation for the Ready and Reveal pilots, all sixth through eighth grade general education and special education teachers from Edison, Liberty, and Roosevelt were all, took part into a full-day training in the program on February 7th of 2019. During this time, we were given instructional materials for both Ready and Reveal, which the programs estimated as a cost of over $30,000, which was in no charge to the district that they gave us, so that we can pilot it effectively. We piloted from around February to May, and we were able to collect some data in terms of teacher feedback on how it went with our students. Can you hold it up? I won't be able to hold it up. Okay. So, it will be available if anyone needs to see it.
Hi. So, two of the three parents were at that selection long day thing, and our job was sort of more to look at what were the resources available for at-home help, and also to look at, you know, if there's explanation for parents and also help for those parents at home who are not math teachers, so that they could help their children, because we had heard from a lot of parents that, you know, in elementary school, there was resources, but in middle school, they were sort of lost, and that was also where they sort of weren't sure how to, to help their children in the more, more, I don't want to say difficult math, but, you know, more challenging. want to say difficult math, but, you know, more challenging. We were also, there was a presentation for parents in January fourteenth, and then there was a survey afterwards, and Susan McPeey compiled those. And then there was a letter to all parents regarding the pilots of Reveal and Ready. And I just also want to reiterate how hard I know that the teachers worked in trying to figure, you know, in trying to ensure that we would have a program that could be used by the district.
So after the pilot from about February to about May, the teachers from grades six through eight voted on the program that they would like to adopt after the pilot of after using Ready and Reveal. And the results showed that overall, teachers voted for the Ready math program over the Reveal math program. If you have a chance to access this presentation after tonight, and you click on the Ready Math link, it'll bring you to an Ed Reports information page website that, when you scroll to the bottom, you can see how the Ready math program ranked, which was about thirteen out of a fourteen-point scale. So you can take a minute after tonight. Thank you.
Most importantly, based on the pilot of the materials, our teachers that used the materials reported that Ready provides engaging learning experiences, strong word problems and real-world applications, student-centered learning, which is aligned with our Danielson model and student-led inquiry, accessible scaffolded problems for learners of all levels, a variety of additional activities, ease of usability for the teachers, a nice layout, lessons can be combined, rearranged, adapted, and supplemented, and also very engaging video resources for students. So overall, as you can see, this is teacher-reported data, that they feel very positively about this curriculum.
Here you can find the breakdown of the resources that were also recommended from the 2018 math committee that are available within the Ready math program. So for our students, there is an online diagnostic test, online lesson packets, standard mastery assessments, after-school and summer lessons and practice materials, instruction book for each student, and a practice book for each student. The parents have access to the parent letter for each unit, which kind of outlines what will be learned in that unit and key points. They will also have access to the students' iReady account, which is that online diagnostic and extra practice, and able to review all the resources that are available to students. So whatever the students can see, the parents can also see. As for the teachers, the teachers, of course, have full access to all instructional materials and, of course, what the students see, the additional practice materials, assessment tools, and performance-based assessments, and the diagnostic reports and ability to group students and inform instruction based on those assessments.
Yeah, before, before I go to the next page, I'd like to add one thing about the resources for the students. I, just like after putting this presentation, I talked to the representative, and they are going to give access to all students from the first day in school till August fifteenth, just in case we need summer work, we need enrichment, we need everything, so every student will have access to it. We could extend it, but after August fifteenth, I think we need to start preparing for the next group and enroll them in the next class. So that's going to be included in everything. The cost for the district, this is for five years, and that is, that is the cost for the program, which is about twenty-six thousand dollars less than the budgeted amount. And the budgeted amount was based on all the five programs that we, you know, we took like a rough estimate, and we came a little bit below the budgeted amount. Following that, which is already budgeted too, the first two years, we will have training for the parents and the teachers, and you will see the implementation plan after this page, and that lays out the number of times per year. Then the next two years, the year three and five, we need minimal training, but we need to maintain the training in the PD. And at the end of the second year, we'd like to give the teachers the opportunity to update the curriculum that we wrote a couple of years ago and make sure that we move forward.
For the 2019-2020 school year, we will prepare for implementation of the Ready math program by providing teachers a full-day professional development in order to train and plan for the following school year. In the next academic year, in addition to our PLCs, our professional learning communities, department meetings, and all the various meetings that we have throughout the year, we will also be providing additional full-day PD throughout the year on monthly basis. Teacher reflection and feedback will be discussed and organized and collected and shared with a publisher in order to plan additional tailored PD for the following years to address teacher concerns and plan for improvement. These plans will be put into place for possible curriculum revision for September 2020 to be completed in May 2021. For the following school year in 2020-2021, we will be continuing to run this program and provide additional PD based on teacher needs. In addition, we will continue to gather teacher reflection and feedback with the ultimate goal of revising the curriculum for implementation on September 2022. Beyond that, we will utilize the data to assess program effectiveness and plan accordingly from there.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Triggs Gals, you may begin when you're ready.
Yes, I'm flipping. But in the meantime, I just want to commend the committee. I'm blown away. Curriculum is what I did for a number of years in another district, and the amount of work and the level of detail and how thorough you are in the process, I am very, very impressed. So kudos to, to all. I also just wanted to talk about how thorough I thought the vetting was, you know, all of the steps that you went through. Not all districts do this, I must tell you that.
We're special.
You're very special, very special. I'm still flipping, so bear with me. Okay, so I was also impressed with the differentiation support that's provided and the ELL support and the special ed. Oftentimes, teachers have to make those accommodations on their own, so I'm impressed that the program provides that for the teachers. I'm also impressed that it provides pacing, but you have the ability to move things around so that teachers have that level of independence and creativity, so that it's not so lockstep. Okay, so here's my big question. Everyday Math, the transition from the Everyday Math to Ready, so as we're looking at our fifth graders who will be moving into the program, what do we foresee, or did we talk to other districts that have used Ready after Everyday Math? I'm curious about the transition for our youngsters.
Well, Ready is a new program, and it's not, you know, it's been growing drastically throughout the country. And, you know, the transition, we looked at it because we couldn't find data from other districts that used, you know, K-5, Everyday, then moving to Ready. We looked at it ourselves, and we worked with the K-5 committee. There were a couple of meetings together for us, and we ensure that there is, there is no, no gaps. And we, we consider in selecting the program, a program that will minimize the gaps and, and minimize the supplement material and ease the transition. So we did, we did, we did that ourselves.
The, the K-5 committee is looking at Ready as well, so they will be deciding, in addition to looking at Everyday Math to decide if they want to stay with it, they're also knowing that the sixth grade and eighth, up through eighth grade will be going to Ready, so they will be seeing if there is a transition, if there is a smooth transition, if they can go to Ready as well, or if there, it would be better suited for them to stay with what they have.
I, I just recall that as we went from very traditional math programs before Everyday Math, that was, you know, rather revolutionary for everyone, parents, teachers, kids, everybody. So that is just the question that I'm asking, as we move from, from Everyday Math into the Ready. Did we see qualities in Ready that were similar to Everyday Math?
Well, yes, there is quality in, in, in Ready Math that ease the transition from a program like Everyday Math. And keep in mind that the grade band is changing drastically in New Jersey. It's K-2, 3, 5, then 6, 8, you start a completely new grade band, that where you introduce ratio and proportion and, and abstract reasoning. And then, you know, you need to keep in mind the background of the students, but at the same time, you want to push them towards effective modeling and problem solving. And Ready has a balance between the two, and that's what the committee. And the rubric itself, if you look at it, it's so detailed. The teachers spent almost like the AM of the full day that we had them to train discussing the rubric and structure in, in a way that they ensure that transition and, and, and the smooth transition rather, you know, in selecting the program that we...
Okay. Do you know if other districts around us have selected Ready?
Selected what?
Ready.
I know Newark is in the process, they're almost at the same stage. And I know like other states, like for example, the state of Oregon, completely using Ready Math, and there are other states. And like I said, it's a new program that is growing drastically and has a lot to offer. And I think like if you look at the EdReport.org ranking of their evaluation with like the focus and the coherent and the, and the rigor and, and the balance and the alignment of the standards, it's, it's amazing. It's phenomenal. Everything is close to the top. If the, the window is between thirteen and fourteen, they're like either thirteen or fourteen. If it's between sixteen and eighteen, it's, they're like seventeen or eighteen. So their ranking is very high. And they, and like, and honestly, all these might sound good, but when I bring it to the classroom and the teachers pilot it, and they say, "It is so engaging, every kid is engaged," to me, that's, that's valuable more than anything else. Piloting is, was key for us and did help us make this, this very challenging decision.
Great. And the real-world applications, which is really important, because kids often want to know, "Why are we learning this? What are we going to do with it?" So if there's a strong component that they can see that there is a need for math, and then I think that's a wonderful thing. I think that's it. Oh, I did the math because I was looking at the, I think, the two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for the instructional materials. And if we looked at all of our sixth through eighth grade students over the next five years, it comes out to, and don't judge me if I'm wrong, like eighty-four dollars per student. So I thought that was a bargain.
And, and I have more good news for you, because this is based on the maximum enrollment, and, you know, that will be adjusted, and we will be charged with what we use.
Right, right. Did the publisher give us a very, very good deal?
They did. They went down from the regular price of like two hundred for the five years to just like hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy.
Great, great. Well, again, thank you very much to all.
Thank you.
Ms. Mordecai.
Sure. First of all, thank you for this. This was a very long process over a couple of years. So thank you for all your hard work. I just want to confirm a few things because I, I wasn't clear. With the next-generation science standards, math had to align with the science program. I, I didn't really get the sense that, that was here, but...
The real-world application includes all science applications. There is no unit that does not have like science application problems and, and STEM and engineering and, you know, so the, the real-world application is huge in this, in this series, and it's throughout, there is no lesson that is not introduced through a real-world application.
Okay, I saw that one science teacher was on the committee, but of the twenty-five teachers who piloted the program, how many of them have a math certification?
They're all certified math teachers.
All, all the twenty-five teachers who piloted?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
It's all the regular and special ed teachers from sixth, seventh, and eighth.
That was going to be my next question. How many spec ed and gen ed teachers?
Everybody. I, I made it clear to the two publishers that I need every, I need the resources for every teacher and every student and every classroom. And they send us about twenty-seven boxes to every building each. They all have the material, and we could utilize it any way we want. Nothing is returning back to them.
Yeah, I was glad to see the equity of this program as well. I know when you first started, Mr. A, I really loved your math flow chart. So I was a little disappointed that I didn't see the math flow chart in your presentation. Will you have a summer component still? Because when you did that flow chart back there, you always had something in the summer.
I would love to, if it's approved.
We used to have it.
I mean, and we are going gradually and like we're adding, Mrs. DiMendez just asked us at the high school to add a course, and we are, we're in the process. And I, I'm a strong believer that if students are given the chance while holding the standards high and pushing them and providing them with the resources, the natural outcome is going to be success.
Okay. You said that Newark is wrapping up their summary, and you believe Oregon is using it. You don't know of any others that are using Ready?
I, you know, there are a lot of districts that are, like, like I said, this is a new program in here in, in the area, and, and it's spreading out, and there are like few districts. I, I don't like recall the list, but I could provide you with, with all the...
I'd appreciate that. As far as additional resources for the high-flyer kids, did you look at anything else? I know I've asked you before about Singapore Math, but did you look at any other more rigorous program for the high, high-flying kids?
Well, this program has a unique, you know, resource where, based on the diagnostic test, it will give an individualized lessons for the students, design them online, they could, they could review them, they could, you know, and they are associated with a certain assessment, and they could, they could take it back, and they could go back to their teacher, and the teacher has access to all that, monitoring the growth and everything in all the students' work, and provide additional help for them. And, you know, the, this is, and this is very similar to the map, which is, we're very familiar with, but is focused on the material that the students are using. So this will have, provide for every student based on their needs, and the questions will become more challenging for the high flyers and, and, and will suit their needs as well.
Okay. On page ten with your equity list, I know it says a spec ed support, but for the kids who are technically not classified, but, you know, they might have a reading delay, is this program, does this program also suit their needs?
This program is balanced. It's not, it, it includes the text. We cannot ignore the text because everything is about word problems. We, we can't just tell the kids, "Solve, simplify, do this, do that." It has to be in the, in the form of a text, but compared to other programs, it is simplified and balanced. It does provide for the students, you know, the...
And they will have the accommodations such as large print, less pictures, and things like that?
The, the program does not have too crowded, they have two books, one for instruction, which is very simple, and the other one is for practice for the students, and they're two different books, and they're very well structured and simplified, and the students can easily follow the language.
Okay. Now, you said that the, the pilot was free of charge. Was it free for both programs, both Reveal and Ready?
Both.
It was at thirty thousand each? Was it $30,000 each or $30,000 total?
Both. I think both of them could, you know, it's a rough estimate.
Okay.
About $30,000, both of them. And the teachers have tons of extra books and they can use them.
That's great. Thank you. My last question. You mentioned online access through August 15. Will there be online access for the texts for the school year, for the five-year cycle?
For students, they have access for everything, from the first day they take it, from the first day in school till August 15.
Okay.
They have access to everything, all these resources.
Okay, good. Because I know my colleagues and I, we were surprised that a couple texts that we currently have, we did not have online access. We had it for like year one, not math, but we had it for year one and didn't have it after that. So, I hope we do.
They do. They have, this is included.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all, thank you for the most comprehensive, in-depth vetting process I've seen to date in this district. I mean, it's amazing. And you pulled in parent resources, got 25 teachers on it, our star, Bob Klempt, my Liberty guy. It's just a fantastic job by everybody. I'm so proud. And Rachel is glad you were all over that. Couple of questions. When you talk about real-world applications, and you said, you know, all science and STEM, so we're talking, there'll be applications for physics, for chemistry, whether it's ratio proportions or algebraic type questions, or maybe even architectural stuff. Maybe you can find these, it'd be great to see examples of these at some point as to how that's manifest. Two is, at some points, I found from personal experience, there was a disconnect between the math curriculum and the science, depending on if a kid was in honors science but general ed math, you know, and there was data analysis involved, whether they're getting what was necessary to do that. Certainly, the kid that was in honors math and honors science, they were getting that. But what is being done to ensure that link, that synchronization between science and the math?
Well, first part is like the real-world application. This is going to be pushed for everybody regardless of their level.
Right.
So, all students are going to experience these new ways of solving and modeling math problems, which directly comes to link itself to science. And it varies. Sixth grade might be a little bit lighter, but when you get to eighth grade, you will have those advanced physics and chemistry and real-life applications. So, gradually, it is moving and it does, every unit includes some real-life applications in it.
Right. I guess what I was looking for too is though, is there a conversation, a dialogue that's ongoing between the science teachers and science department, the math department to say, "Okay, this is what's coming up next in Ready for grade six. This is what you're doing in grade six, gen ed science and honors science." And to have that ongoing kind of that dialogue.
The science supervisor, the science supervisor is a member of the selection committee.
Right, Ms. Soriano, I saw that.
And she was, she sat through most of the, like, all the critical meetings and the evaluation stage throughout the program. And she was very, very impressed with what the program has to offer. And next is like, would like to have an opportunity for our teachers, our math teachers, after they establish themselves with the program, to start working side by side with the science teachers.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes, absolutely.
Because you're going to need that symbiotic relationship continuing beyond the initial analysis that, gee, these go well together, these work well together, but it's making them actually synchronize.
We actually started this year at the high school level. Mrs. Soriano and I had a couple of meetings for both the math and the science teachers during the department meeting, where we give the teachers an opportunity to collaborate. Would love to have more of those, hoping next year we'll have more of the 90-minute meetings back to us. So, we'll be able to do more of that. And hopefully, within a year or two, we'll push that to the middle school.
Excellent. Sounds great. From a differentiation, support, and enrichment standpoint, are you going to have any small group learning opportunities or even projects are associated and that sort of thing to reinforce the experiential aspect of it?
The teachers have access to administer diagnostic tests at any point they feel. And they, those reports will provide them with, you know, detail about the student's level of achievement, what they're ready to learn and what they already know and what they might struggle with. And that will definitely help the students the same way MAP is helping, but this level focused in the unit, the teachers will be able to group the students based on their needs.
Right.
And monitor the growth after the first unit, the second unit, they might be able to switch the grouping. And it's an ongoing, dynamic process.
Ongoing dynamic, right.
And there is actually, there are a couple of things that are unique about this program. It offers, every unit offers a series of PBA's, performance-based assessments, which is aligned to our new curriculum. And the teachers don't have to reinvent the wheel. At least, they have a couple of samples. And then they get together and they modify and they improve and they go forward. And the other thing is, throughout instruction, there is an assessment to target mastery of standards, ongoing preparation for students towards the state standardized test. This is ongoing and unlimited, and the students have access to it 24/7, you know, they can do it anytime.
That's excellent. Thank you. Ms. Triggs Gales was touching upon this, and I'm not sure I fully grasp how it's being approached. How are you dealing with articulation going from fifth grade to sixth grade until the two systems are more in sync?
Well, would love to have more time to meet. We met a couple of times, this fifth and sixth grade, and I feel that those articulation meetings are valuable. What I'd like to do is continue to have a couple of us from this committee serve with the K-5 committee next year, attend their meetings and participate with them. They're going to be piloting Ready. They're going to come and see us teaching Ready in the class. And you know, I'd like to have, our relation is growing and would like to keep it moving in the right direction. And I strongly believe that vertical articulation is key. And as you see this committee here, we brought Mrs. Nozzi with us, who teaches our co-teaching algebra classes, the students that come with some, you know, need for like special attention. And she had a lot to offer to this committee. And we'd like to do the same with the K-5 next year.
Okay. Help me a little bit from a content standpoint. When you're looking at these scaffolded problems, you know, for learners of algebra levels, in sixth grade, what actual content are you dealing with? Are you dealing, is it more pre-algebra? Is there Algebra I? Is there a mix of both, depending on the level of the student? Same question for seventh grade, eighth grade, are they potentially getting into some Algebra II, or is it still more Algebra I-based? Or does it depend on whether or not they're honors versus gen ed?
Well, this series, our accelerated math starts in sixth grade with pre-algebra, Algebra I, and Algebra II. And those are like, after pre-algebra, Algebra I and Algebra II.
Right.
You're not talking about the grade-level standards. You're talking about one or two grades beyond their level. So, they're high school courses.
Okay.
So, these, this program is for the rest of the students in the grade level. And they are meeting the grade-level standards. So, in sixth grade, the grade band, six through eight, starts with ratio and proportion, then move gradually towards, you know, linear algebra. Then, at the end, in eighth grade, the standards, and so is the program that we chose, cover up to 35% of Algebra I in eighth grade. So, that's the standards. We can't compromise. We can't bring a program that is not going to meet the standards.
But we can go beyond the standards.
You can go beyond the standards with the differentiation.
With the differentiation.
And the online tool. When you give the diagnostic test and identify the level of the students beyond the grade level, it will provide more work. And working with MAP also, that will complete the cycle.
All right. I like, just a couple comments. I love the parent tools available because that is one of the things that everyday math had. You get your parent letter. It actually goes beyond that because if you're able to access the student iReady account, you can see the student videos and all that stuff and help to make it more concrete, really bring it home. Also, love the fact that you're doing provisional, providing additional all-day, full-day PD, September, November, January, because often, I feel like we kind of hit it and quit it.
First year is critical. And that's what the teachers, the feedback I got from the teachers regarding the previous series, that wasn't done. And I kept promising them. "I promise you, this is going to be done. This is going to be done." You choose the right program that you feel is the best to suit your needs. And our job as a district to support you fully and provide you with all the resources to be successful.
Awesome.
And without this is, and by the way, we got them to offer all these full days at a very, very reduced rate, about $1,500 a day.
Nice.
For all teachers.
For all teachers.
Yes.
That's nice. Thank you so much. Well done. Well done, team.
Ms. Mordecai.
So, I just want to thank the team, especially if we get the names of the 25 teachers that piloted in their classrooms. I know that's no small feat to do, being married to a math teacher myself, who I think was actually part of your committee. So, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work that you did. I know he was really ecstatic about the discussions that you had and all the time and effort that teachers put in outside of the classroom with this program and doing all the extra legwork and all the review. So, thank you to all of you for that and thank you to all the teachers that participated. I guess for myself, I'm pretty short and sweet, so I won't hold everyone up in the interest of time. I think my peers have kind of covered a lot of the questions I had. But just from a material standpoint, I know we mentioned, or you know, it's mentioned there's a lot of the online materials. Will there be resources for those students that may not have access to all the online materials? And how do we plan to support them with that?
They will have, every student will have an instruction book and they will have practice book. And the teachers have the same online access. And if needed, they could print material for the kids that don't have that.
Okay, great. And then, just in terms of the consistency, so we talked a little bit about going from the K-5 and working with those folks. Are there plans or has there been discussion about how this program works in preparation for students going into high school? Or once they're in the high school program, is there consistency with the programs and the curriculum?
You're talking about like the middle school or the...
So, going from eighth grade into the high school, regardless, you know, depending on which level they're going in at?
I'm going to turn to the expert in this area.
Absolutely.
So, as Mr. A. said, I am on the receiving end and that's why I was brought on the committee. So, I teach, I co-teach with another math teacher, non-classified, non-special ed students, who have been recommended by their eighth-grade teachers to be in the co-taught, there's four sections at the high school. So, these are ninth graders entering Algebra I, and they may not be prepared. They are largely unprepared. And so, that's why we have two teachers in an average class size. And so, when I was part of the committee, I did not have a vote. However, when I was reviewing the data based on the surveys we provided to the teachers, it was very clear that the Ready program provided opportunities for students to read, interpret, model, explain, argue, all these wonderful things that are in the mathematical practices and the Common Core standards, now the New Jersey standards, which we really value because math is no longer about just being able to do the procedures. We do not want anything that is drill and kill. We want students to be able to read and interpret and understand. And especially seeing the most recent state test, since we reduced from three to two days, I really saw a focus on, given a function and given a real-world application, here's a situation, you have to understand what's going on, given this equation, and you have to work with it. And it's complex and it is not straightforward and students are overwhelmed. And so, a curriculum that can take real-world situations, scaffold them for the students, especially not the particular high flyers who are entering Algebra I, Algebra II, these are for the majority of the rest of the students, to be able to scaffold these problems, break them down, model it, and really show how mathematicians and scientists can work in the real world, it's a beautiful thing. And so, I can only support as much as I possibly can the decision that the teachers made. And you can see in the data from the open-ended responses that the teachers shared that it is everything that we are saying it is. They really are able to understand and interpret, which will then only help them later on in high school and on the state test.
Great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Mordecai.
If you allow me to add, you know, Mrs. Nozzi is about to become Dr. Nozzi, who's finishing her PhD in math education and doing a lot of research in our classrooms, monitoring the progress of the students and how they're working. And she was asked by the teachers so many times, "Which program? Which program?" And her and I refused to push any agenda. We want them to make the decision because we simply believe that they will make the right decision for our district. Just one simple story about Mrs. Nozzi. I interviewed her back in the days in North Arlington and I offered her a job on the spot on the same day. But she refused because she said, "I want to go to West Orange." She didn't know I was going to follow her. So, it's a pleasure working with these teachers. And believe me, the work that they did and they put together is unbelievable. And it's, our job was to coach them and support them. "I can't do this because I need this, this, and that. My job is to get you this, this, and that and more if I can." And they did a great job. And I can't ask for a better group of teachers than the ones we have.
Ken, just one more thing.
Sure.
So, and just, I just want to make sure, we're going to have this presentation uploaded on our website, so folks can click to links.
Great.
So, first, I have a question about the committee itself. So, you guys did a really good job with the presentation. And it's really diverse already in terms of what grade levels it covers and everything. But we were wondering if students could also be added to the committee? Because students themselves know what they go through as, like, when learning, what they struggle with and everything. So, if they could, not necessarily like make the changes, but provide their input and allow the committee members to make those changes, it would be, I think it would be helpful.
I agree. We were thinking about having like a survey for the students, but we felt it was too much. But the teachers informally maintained a record of their observations regarding the students. I, like, one day, I was walking into one of the classrooms and the teacher was towards the end of her, like, piloting of the second program. So, she said, "Okay, let me just do this." She held the two books and she asked the kids, "What do you think? Which one is going to be more helpful to you?" And it was like the most interesting dialogue that I listened to from a group of sixth graders. And they did, and all teachers monitored that, and it was part of their decision-making. And one of the key points in deciding which program, engaging. Teachers felt that was engaging. They did not leave a student behind. If all your students are engaged, that's a great sign. So, that was informally done, but I agree. Like, if it was, if we had more time, piloting, we started in February and we need to end now. And it was, you know, otherwise, I would have not hesitated to do a survey for the students as well. And maybe have a couple of upper-grade students in the committee might be, might be a good idea for our K-5, you know, committee for next year. So...
And yeah, Cecina is also going to address more specific questions that we have about what was in the presentation.
This is the first question. May have already been answered, I'm not sure, but it's just a quick clarification. If, so, as I saw, Ready was a K to 8 program, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Is only the 6 to 8 band going to be adopted, or is the whole program going to be adopted among, across all the elementary schools?
It's 6 to 8 math.
Okay, so just...
6 to 8.
Okay.
And our K-5 are piloting that, one of the programs, next year. And they're going to make their decision towards the end of next year.
Okay. So, there was brought up briefly about the consistency of the transition between classes and the middle school. I know from students that are now, there's a student particularly who's a freshman now who wanted to be in IMS this year, but she couldn't because of all the different math tracks that are going on right now currently between the middle school and the high school. She wasn't, she didn't fulfill all the prerequisites to take any IMS courses. So, I just want to know, under this program, is there, is there going to be more streamlined classes? Like, what is the order of classes into the program?
Well, the IMS requires students to finish Algebra I and Algebra, either Algebra I or Algebra II in the middle school. So, that's the requirement. So that's, that's, that's the requirement, to go into the IMS. So, those students, if they, if they move to Algebra I from early stage, fine, but those, like, they, they won't be able to get into these, the IMS program from, from Ready, I-Ready.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is, like, our accelerated programs, I mean, they're producing, there is no need to replace them with a program that offers less because this is a program that not, there is no K eight program or any sixth grade or seventh grade or eighth grade. No program, no matter how advanced it is, is gonna cover the full curriculum of Algebra I or Algebra II. That's why we offer these accelerated courses in the, in, in, in seventh and eighth grade.
So the, the Ready program is not for accelerated students?
It's for, it's for the, for the, you know, our accelerated, they're taking high school courses. So they're taking Algebra I and Algebra II, yes. And the IMS last year was limited only to Algebra II, we extended that to include this coming year. We have two levels of math in, in the IMS, Algebra I and Algebra II. And we have about fifty-two students in the two classes, which is, you know, amazing. And, and students, by the way, have the opportunity to apply to the IMS, I know this is always a concern, after finishing the Algebra I in, in the middle, in the high school here, even, you know, they could apply the following year.
Okay. Next question is, more to deal with, there was a lot of emphasis, I think, on like online resources and there, Ms. Merklinger brought this up as well. But how is, what is the balance between like the online-based learning and the traditional paper pencil learning? And is all the individualized learning plans that you mentioned with the diagnostic testing, is that gonna be all executed online or is it individualized also like with paper, pencil?
It could be both. Every student will receive a hard copy of the instructional book and a hard copy of the practice book. Those two books will be available for the students and the practice book is structured in a way that allows students to, to maintain organized notes and solve problems and show steps and go back and review. If the students have access to online, they could, based on their diagnostic, they could go to their, like, recommended lessons and, you know, go over them and, and do the, the, the assigned problems. If not, then the teachers have the ability, based on the student's level from the diagnostic, because the diagnostic could be administered in the classroom. And, by the way, students have the, the ability to do it outside as well, but they could be, and the teachers have access to all of this and they know the level of the students. And if Johnny comes and says, you know, "I don't have a, you know, access, I, I prefer the paper and pencil", the teacher can print the material for them.
Lastly, I think, this, I wanna know if this is more of like a, a teacher-led kind of learning or is it more individual learning or is there a balance?
Every single, the teacher said that this is a student-centered, you know, textbook. All the activities are centered around the students and making the discovery and connecting and, 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 and problem-solving and discussing and, and coming up with the conclusion.
That's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one, first I do wanna thank you all, especially those of you who've had my kids, really appreciate it. You guys have done a fantastic job on this, it's extremely clear what the recommendation is. My one question about that is the breakdown of the teacher votes, that was fourteen and eleven. I'm curious if it was, if there was a slim majority in each of the three years or if it was upside down, if any of the three years where the teachers preferred the non-chosen reveal over Ready.
It was, it was almost balanced, you know, there were like teachers from different grade levels. You know, some like, you know, some grade levels maybe a little bit more, one or two here and there. We're talking about like eight teachers per grade level. So, the votes were very clear and the reason, the other program has a lot to offer and it's also, you know, the program that we use for the upper track, but the teachers felt that the students were like easily disengaged because of so many, like, it's not as structured and as focused. And the resources were so much to the point that the teachers have difficulty navigating through. And, and it's not, it's not as focused and as clear as this one.
Gotcha.
And, and that's why, you know, somebody who's really tech savvy, who could go and do this and do that, could prefer this program over the other one or vice versa. So, i- it was, it was a very tough decision for us. And I invited Mrs. Veneziano in our, to our last meeting to, just like, the teachers were, "What if we choose this program, what if we choose this program?" And we guaranteed him, we assured him that we will, no matter what you choose, we will provide you with the support that you need. It was, it was a very tough decision because honestly, the two programs, you know, if, have a lot to offer and I, I said that to them, "If you write the names of the two programs on a piece of paper and pick one, I'm sure we'll be able to support you, but I want you to go through the process." And I will reveal something now. Mrs. Nozzi, Mrs. Nozzi and I, at the beginning, when we went over those five programs, we did lean towards this program, but we kept it as a secret for ourselves till the teachers made this decision.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Ms. Mendez, what's next?
Check, check.
Okay, again, thank you to the teachers and the staff, the parents and everyone involved. I think we're very proud of this work, also because it is work that's accomplished over time and we can see the long-range planning and we can see the work of previous committees being considered with new committees. Also the articulation that goes across all of the grade spans, bringing the high school down into the committee, bringing the elementary up into the committee. And so we're following this pattern across all of our other evaluations. With regard to the rest of the reports, the high school science department was one of five schools in New Jersey to be chosen to participate in a district partnership. The grant provided four teachers and an administrator the opportunity to attend three next-generation science standards workshops with specific areas of focus at the Science Education Institute at Raritan Valley Community College throughout the eighteen, nineteen school year and it also provided consulting services of Stacy Van Derine, founder and lead consultant of Leadership in Science. After each workshop, the PD areas of focus were the New Jersey, the next-generation science standards cross-cutting concepts, the science and engineering practice of arguing from evidence and designing three-dimensional lessons. Following each workshop, teachers and the supervisor observed one teacher actually implementing the skills that they learned in the workshop at the high school. And the consultant then led another two-hour debriefing and reflection session on all of the training and the learning. And then the district partnership provided the teacher and the supervisor with the skills to efficiently and collaboratively lead all science teachers in refining the implementation of next generation. So this was a great grant opportunity, it was a great professional learning opportunity where our teachers and supervisor were able to participate. So congratulations to those teachers for being awarded that grant and that learning opportunity that will help them implement the next-generation science standards. With regard to our diversity job fair that was held on April twenty-seventh, it was a very successful event. So I just want to thank all of our members of the Human Resources Department and Registration who coordinated this event, Mr. Palick and his staff. They were able to garner two-hundred-and-eighteen registrations, of which a hundred-and-seventy-five candidates attended. They are for open positions and anticipated positions. So therefore, any open positions that we had in the district, we will look to these candidates and these screenings to hire and also for anticipated openings that will be happening through, now throughout the summer. We will continue to keep those on record, on file. Last week, we began our MAP training for parents. We held our first training on May sixteenth. Parents who came were able to go through the MAP, understand the assessment, look at sample types of questions, understand how to read their report and they were also able to log into a computer and take a sample test. So it was a very, a, a nice time with some of our parents. We will have a second session on May twenty-ninth, again. It will be posted, or it is posted online, letters will go home to parents to remind them next week and we're looking forward to having that next session. With regard to our diversity committees, just a quick update. For the diversity committee, we have four different areas of focus, as we mentioned at a prior board meeting. Those different subcommittees are, the first one, Hiring Procedures and Practices for Recruiting a Diverse Workforce. The second subcommittee is Curriculum and Instructional Materials for Staff Resources. The third is Diversity and Cultural Competency Training for Staff. And then the third committee, which is already started, is looking at the Comprehensive Equity Plan and Affirmative Action Plan. So that first subcommittee has already met once, they're meeting again next week. They're working through our Comprehensive Equity Plan, it is due to the county in June, therefore they've started. The rest of the subcommittees, we have received thirty-six volunteer applications online in addition to the twenty somewhat staff members who have volunteered. And so now those names are being assembled together to send out letters to invite the committee members the week of May twenty-eighth for the first committee meeting. The second one will be the second week of June and we will post these. Our immediate goals are to, again, with the first subcommittee that's already started meeting to complete the Comprehensive Equity Plan and Affirmative Action Plans. The second one with the other remaining three committees is to establish the priorities for each of the subcommittees, to establish their objectives for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, to collect survey this year prior to leaving and to plan for all professional development for nineteen, twenty. So that is where we are with our diversity subcommittees. And we have our HIB report.
So for the diversity committee, you mentioned the Equity Action Plan, when did you say it was due?
It is due in June.
Okay, no, okay.
I, I can get the date for you.
Okay, my other question is, in light of the math presentation we just had and the discussions around equity and Cecina, she actually reminded me of a question. Now, when you're doing the equity, Comprehensive Equity Action Plan, will you take into account the equity in our math program and in our other programs? And to Cecina's point, if we have several tracks and we have prerequisites for programs, that does shut some people out. So I hope when you're looking at the Equity Action Plan, that you're going to take a look at prerequisites. I know South Orange Maplewood has gone through a terrible year and a half redoing their entire program and they have removed quite a few prerequisites for everything, for APs, for honors. So I hope we're looking at that when we look at the Comprehensive Equity Action Plan.
We absolutely are and I do believe we need to go back and just make sure that we are not blocking students from any advanced coursework. We need to consider and reconsider how we allow students opportunities to honors, to AP, to, to any of the courses that they'd like to take, that they are demonstrating a task commitment and the ability to really achieve. Again, I, I've spoken briefly about this before, I, I think that speaks to our district philosophy and maybe some past practices of having some very rigid criteria in place. So we need to, as a district, decide what is our philosophy going to be. I know in curriculum, we are going to enter into some very serious conversations about that. With regard to the Comprehensive Equity Plan, there is a rubric and a very specific itemized list of things that we must look for in instructional materials that will also absolutely take place. In addition to that, as the Affirmative Action Officer for Curriculum and Instruction and Resources, whenever we draft curriculum, develop curriculum, we also have to think about how we address the diversity and the state requirements in our curriculum. That is a part of our process, it's a part of our application, our form process when we're submitting curriculum for approval. We also go through that as well.
Okay, and I wanna make sure we're looking at our two E kids. Twice exceptional. Thank you.
Mr. Mendez, I also have a couple of questions. One, on that same topic, the current equity plan, which is three years old, I'd be very curious to see how we've done year one, year two, year three. I know that we're supposed to do, I think, self-assessments and send them in at the end of every year. I'd like to see how the board has done over the last three years, I guess twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. The other question is, how many parents did we have at the first MAP session?
Six.
Six, wow. Okay, and the second one is when?
It is May twenty-ninth.
And so can you just tell the public why they should come out for that meeting?
Sure, so on May twenty-ninth, we will be back here to talk about the MAP assessment. We will review how to read those reports. We will review the benefit of MAP as an instructional tool for teachers and how it's being used in the classroom. And we will also review any questions parents may have around the test itself, the items, how it's adaptive, how it moves students beyond grade level, it allows them to push as high as they can go. We will talk about the uses of MAP in our district. Currently, we use it for new entrance, we use it as a screener for K one, we use it as a part of the criteria for gifted and talented and we use it as a part of the exemptions for honors. We totally want to establish some very clear goals for next year with regard to how teachers can use MAP to inform small group instruction, now that we've had MAP in district and we have students participating in the assessments. Actually, there's testing this week. So we would hope that parents would be able to come out and participate in, in the informational. However, in addition to that, we're going to look to, as we post our presentation online, which it is posted, perhaps doing one of those videos where you can voiceover. So for the parents who aren't able to come, I know we have some other responsibilities that, that take precedence. We can certainly look to have those presentations posted online for our parents to be able to simulate being here with us. Along with that, there is the link online where they can click on and take the MAP test for themselves, a demo of it so they could feel it, see it, experience it with their, with their children.
And not fear it.
And not fear it, that is a good point. MAP is not high stakes, it's not a state assessment, it's not an assessment that if a child says, "You know what, today's not a good day for me to take this, can I take it the next day or next week?", the teacher can stop at any point, so this is really for the teacher to use as a tool.
Thank you.
Along the same equity lines, just in looking at our current criteria and standards, first, I, I do wanna say that the exemptions, the honors exemptions, the exemptions from the honors test have definitely reduced, from everything I've heard, the number of kids having to take the honors test and that was a combination of MAP scores and, and PARC scores. Here's the only place I'd be a little concerned and I think that was a, a fantastic step in the right direction. And I can just say personally, my daughter benefited from it. Getting, she's now in all four honors as a result because she was doing well in MAP and PARC. And we weren't gonna put her through the stress of taking the honors test. However, as we look at the criteria, this would go to what some of our goals are in terms of, what was our goal in terms of the percentage of kids that can be eligible to enter honors? And there's always gonna be some kind of cutoff, that's just, that's just how it goes. Cause you have to look at your, your, your top-tier performance, right, performers. Performers. But with the English, when we looked at Parky LA, the score, the, the score range of the 770 to 850 PARC, you know, allowed as many as, anywhere from 34% in seventh grade to 40% for fifth grade to potentially be eligible. But when we looked at math, and we're looking for fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, and what percentage of the kids had the, there was a different score range, it was 790 to 850 for PARC math, it could be as small for the seventh graders trying to qualify as 8% and no higher, and 12% for sixth and 17% for fifth. So at some point, I mean, that's a tremendous gap between that. So we would need to have some sort of, ideally, a target for what it's we're shooting for. Whether we said, oh, well, honors will be the top 20%, I'm just saying this, I'm not saying that's what it should be, that's for you to present to us, but the criteria are kind of all over the place in terms of what that cutoff would be.
Actually, the criteria is very clear, it's the Level 5 and the topper, the upper end of Level 4. It is different for math because the cutoff for the state is different for math, we don't determine that. With regard to the difference between ELA and math, if we look at our standards and we see student performance across the nation in ELA, moving from elementary into the middle school, for example, into those more technical courses, we see that math becomes a more technical area of study. We see that's where math splinters off into the specific areas of study, like Algebra 1 and Algebra 2. Therefore, in middle school, for example, which is where we're looking at the honors program, you have ELA in their content area, but it's ELA 6, it's ELA 7, it's ELA 8. In math, not so. In math, you see the progression of the math curriculum, you see math at grade level and/or the accelerated courses, which is Algebra 1, which is where we want our students to be in the pre-algebra. So that is why the math, you see the rigor in the PARC score for the exemption. This is how it's delivered, right? So I think that would account for the difference in those scores versus saying that we could, or thinking that we could just compare how the state cuts off the ELA with the math. I think they, they're psychometricians, right? They look at that differently.
It's not even so much the state. I guess what I'm getting to is, the 770 is upper, upper Level 4, so is 790. And the difference between the percentage of kids that are in that 20-point range is tremendous. So a fifth grader going into sixth grade with a 770 still makes it at 34%, up to 34%. Those kids could potentially qualify for math, but if you, once you go to 790, it becomes 17%. For a seventh grader, that, that, that score range then becomes 8%.
Because the honors class is the algebra.
I understand. I'm just saying, we need to, it would, it would be helpful, somebody looking at this from the outside, it doesn't seem consistent in terms of what that percentage of students we're looking at as that, as the, the cutoff or as the determinant, when it ranges from 8% to 34%, or from 8% to 7, to 17%. Not to continue this discussion today, but it's something we should have a further discussion on at some point, especially in looking at a Comprehensive Equity Plan and keeping the pathways open for kids who are prepared to take a challenge, who are motivated to take that challenge, making sure they have the opportunity to take that challenge. That's all. Thank you so much.
Back to the HIB report.
Back to the HIB report. Are there any questions on HIB?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, so that closes the superintendent report.
All right. Up next, questions from the public on agenda items only. If you'd like to speak, you can have three minutes, come on up, let us know your name and your address. If you have questions that could use some follow-up on an agenda item, there's the clipboard right over there on that little side bookshelf.
Good evening, Mark Maniscalco from the high school. First, I want to thank Mr. Ziggy and his people for their work on the Legionella issues and the air quality issues. I do have a few questions. Mr. Ziggy spoke about some water problems being high risk or low risk. As we know, the CDC says there is no safe level, none, of Legionella exposure. So in light of the fact that we are coming to the end of the provision of water at the high school, I'm wondering if the plan we have involves exposing any students or staff to any water sources where there's any level of Legionella present, or will all those sources be turned off? I'm hoping to be informed that we will be provided with detailed test results that can establish for the staff that every single water source that is being used is Legionella-free, and also that lets us know which still has some Legionella, so we can be assured that they're not turned on and thus exposing us to any risk. And I'm also hoping that we can be provided with the detailed air quality test results and water results from both this building and any other buildings. Thank you very much.
Also talking about buildings and grounds, I wanted to also ask that it's not just, or just remind everybody that it's not just important right now to keep testing, but as the years go down, that we establish a schedule that is done regularly every so often, so that we don't run into this problem again. And then the other thing, I had a note in my notes that Mr. Ziggy was also going to give us a report on the projects that were not going to be able to be funded this year, and there was supposed to be a report tonight on a five-year plan for how we were going to address those in the future, and I don't see that listed on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items? All right, seeing none. Oh, we've got one. Once an agenda and once in regular public comment at the end. So twice.
Sangeeta Padlani, 22 Florence Place. This is like deja vu for me. So, and, and you all will appreciate that, 10 years ago, was it, when we implemented Everyday Math? I see Sandra and Mark nodding their head. And it was interesting to hear the new presentation, the presentation on this new program that's going to be implemented this year. Oh, it's, it's not this September? But this, for me, it's this year, this calendar year, to be, yes. So the people that, I don't know how many of, I mean, I know Sandra and Mark were here. I don't know if we have anyone over here in the public that was, there you go, Carolyn. Carolyn is here. We went through this whole process of implementing Everyday Math. Clearly, there were some issues, as there are with any new program. We contemplating and learning from the mistakes that we made when we implemented the Everyday Math. Is that some consideration? So I think one, that's one big part to look at. The one challenge and the one big issue we realized was the training for the teachers. What we heard from everyone was, the program is great, it's incredible, it challenges the kids, it approaches at different levels, everything that I heard today about the new program as well. So the question is, have we given enough time and planning to implement this new program? Because no program is successful if it hasn't been implemented correctly. And then one, I know none of the team members are here who presented, but is there one distinct feature that this program, Ready Program, has from the Everyday Math program? Is that something that we can find out? And, you know, I'm just throwing these things, topic questions out, just for us to think about it. And when we piloted this program, how many students were involved in the pilot program? That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items? Seeing none.
Mr. Ziggy, could you come to answer Mr. Maniscalco's questions and to potentially just give a brief overview of what projects we still need to work on and we can bring the five-year plan for our next meeting?
Yeah, we'll put together a report for the Legionella sources and what is out there and what's not out there. We could certainly do that. We'll have availability of the reports and we'll take it from there. Capital, I don't know what kind of questions you're looking for on the capital.
I think the question was, what projects do we have right now that are not able to be funded?
The only funding that we have this year are for two roof projects over at St. Cloud School and for the high school electrical upgrades. Those are the only projects, we have 244,000 for those projects, and those are working on right now to implement them in this coming school year.
Very good, thank you.
Just a short question from Mr. Ziggy. Potholes.
Yes.
Are our friends or enemies. So we've got a couple here at the high school that greet you from Conforti. When do those get taken care of?
They'll be done this summer. We're estimating around $130,000 to be done for asphalt and concrete. We're out for bid right now for that work across the district and all the schools. And the driveway, Conforti Drive, we'll get a couple of area overlays like we've been doing each year and keep plugging away at it. So, yeah, that'll be done this year.
Right, because the winters just wreak havoc every, every year.
They take a toll. Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
And just with regard to any capital projects that also doubled as security, those are being folded into the COPS grant. We did submit our application today for the grant, so that would include all things like the doors, all of the doors in the schools, and anything that could also potentially be security. Thank you. With regard to the math program, certainly the supervisor of math, K5, was present when they implemented Everyday Math. She also sits on the Elementary K5 Committee, she leads that work. So as far as thinking about what worked, what could have worked better with the implementation of Everyday Math, she and the teachers are there to inform that process. With regard to time and planning to implement this correctly, absolutely. So all six to eight teachers have piloted the program. All of the students in grades six through eight have experienced the pilot from about February to May. The training and professional development for the teachers is already included in our budget for the next five years, with more intensive training in years one and two, and subsequent training in years three to five. And the professional development will begin in June after board approval on the 3rd, then we will begin right after that. The professional development will be set up so that the teachers can all participate on a full day PD before they leave for the summer. They already have all of their materials, as you've heard, so the company has given them their materials, so they're able to take those home as well over the summer to begin to train. They have materials in both programs, but they'll choose the one, they'll use the one for the program that they've selected, and so they'll be able to begin their lesson planning for September.
I just think, on the PD question too, one of the distinguishing characteristics of this program was the approach to professional development and providing additional full-day PD September, November, January, March, May, and June, so that it's not, here's, here it is the beginning, here is the middle, it's a continuous reinforcement and continuous support for professional development throughout. And that's what's really different from how we've done it in the past, and that's, so Ms. Padlani, is she still here? Yeah. So that's, that's a huge difference.
Also, it's not just workshops. We fold it into the professional learning communities, to the 90-minute PD. They have their small group studies, so the teachers are able, as you heard Mr. Clem to describe, as they offer a lesson in a classroom, teachers can observe and then they come back, they debrief with the consultant, and then they're able to really unpack what they've learned.
Ms. Padlani, I totally identify with you. I was trying not to have deja vu, but I, I was here with the Everyday Math, and as we were implementing that, other districts were getting rid of Everyday Math, and you and I were both under math wars that was going across the country against Everyday Math. So, yeah, a little deja vu and hindsight is 20/20. So I'm glad we're here finally. Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion for personnel, items one through two?
I'll motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Personnel? Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Morticay?
Yes, but I just, I just want to say, Mr. Mendez, I just want to make sure that when we're hiring relatives of other people, that they're not in the same building. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, yes.
And President Alford?
Yes. May I have a motion for curriculum and instruction, numbers one through three?
So moved.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Morticay?
Yes.
President Alford?
Yes. May I have a motion for finance, special services, items one through five, and business office, items one through 13?
I'll motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Morticay?
Yes.
President Alford?
Yes. A motion, please, for reports, items one and two.
I'll motion.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Morticay?
Yes.
President Alford?
Yes. Okay. At this time, public comment on any topic, questions, comments, et cetera. You can, again, come to the microphone, your name, your address. If you need some follow-up, please put your information on that clipboard, so Ms. Mendez can get back to you.
Good night. Excuse my voice, I'm coming down with a really bad cold. I wanted to say foremost, Maritza Brown, 5 Linden Court, West Orange, New Jersey. I am the president and founder of a nonprofit organization, Circle of Rainbow Sisters Seeking Spiritual and Wellness Connection, doing business as core spiritual and wellness. We have two main services that we provide to the community. I am actually the co-chair for the Financial Literacy Program, and the other program is Abuse Women Support. I'm here to do two things, actually thank the board for supporting this organization from the inception. We incorporated in 2016, we received our 501(c)(3) the end of the year, so we're going on almost three years anniversary as a 501(c)(3). The members are extremely passionate about financial literacy. We partner with the schools and West Orange has been phenomenal. I am proud to be a resident of West Orange, and I'm proud to be partnering with this school system to bring this program to fruition. I won't hold everyone up, I'll try to fast-track this. So the second page in will give you a description of the three programs. So we have three main programs, and our goal, the ultimate goal, is to eliminate or reduce the debt ratio for our teens when they exit college. And if you look at that inset, this third page, I think it's page number three, it actually gives you a highlight of the three programs. So I'm here to share with the new board, because some of you are from the original board where I presented, and some are new. So, Mrs. Scales, this is the first time that I'm presenting and you're here, but I think the others, I was here three years ago. So the goal is to, this is going to be a statewide- So the goal is to, this is going to be a statewide program. And our goal is to partner with the schools to influence strong financial literacy at the inception, early education. So it's interesting that the lieutenant governor actually just signed a law on behalf of Governor McGreevy on financial literacy. So it's a mandate now for the schools to teach it to sixth graders through eighth grade. We actually begin with fourth graders. We started with the sixth graders and it's a pilot. And we found that the teens that joined the program had an appetite for it. So they adapted to budgeting, understanding expenses. And they, we compete to reduce those expenses in the household. If you look at that page, we actually awarded, from the first year, we awarded 1,775. The second year, 4,740. But these, these funds are directly deposited into their 529 college account. If they don't have one, we establish one for them. The other program is FRASA, the Financial Readiness.
I'm gonna have to cut you off, I'm afraid, because we're out of time.
Okay, because you can read this, so that's the first program.
And we'd be happy to look this over and we can talk to you about it, absolutely.
The second, the second reason I'm here is how we can, our model is everything has to be self-funded. So what I'm asking is for this board, because the other board had approved it, if this board will approve our costs for the test that we award the Financial Readiness.
If you could email us, we can take a look at that. Thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, so Jewel Hadret, Singita Badlani, Nikhi Badlani Foundation, and 22 Florence Place. So it was just recently brought to my attention, extremely recently, that we are evaluating the music program in our school district because of a mandate by State of New Jersey, which is the core curriculum for content standards. And the intent, when I was doing my research, I just, I'm gonna read it as it says on that. "The intent of the comprehensive health and physical education is to empower students to assume lifelong responsibility to develop physical, social, and emotional wellness. Wellness is a positive state of well-being in which a person makes decisions that lead to a healthy and physically active lifestyle. This includes an understanding of the healthy mind, body, and spirit. As per Center of Disease Control, one in six U.S. children aged two to eight years is diagnosed with mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder." Why I'm stating and reading this, because I think we all do agree that music has several benefits. And some of these are, it improves your memory, your cognition, reduces stress, and provides comfort. I for one have had an experience with that. My youngest son at the age of six turned to music after he suffered a loss. For any program to prosper and to be successful, we have to have a strong foundation. Just like no tree can survive and grow without nurturing and anchoring roots. And at West Orange, we have cultivated the love of music in our children at a very young age. We've been offering music lessons to these students, starting at age grade three. From what I understand right now, on the table is, we had two 30-minute sessions, lessons during the week, and now it's going to be cut into one. And when you're talking third graders, 30 minutes, it's really not 30 minutes, it's 20 minutes, because it takes a while to settle them down. Is that sufficient? That's something we need to ask ourselves. And we have been a leading school district for music program because of the dedication and the commitment of all these teachers that you see today. So a round of applause for them, that they are here today to fight and support what they believe in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go. Katie Witze, 49 Main Road. I have a son attending Mount Pleasant Elementary, in third grade, I might add. So I also want to address the music being cut at the elementary level to make room for health education. But let me start by saying that I am sure we can all agree that health is important. What I'm asking is that you consider other options. Nearly everyone enjoys music for music's sake, but there's research that says it does even more. Music helps develop language and reasoning. Students learn to improve their own work. Music gives kids a sense of achievement. It keeps kids engaged. Students learn pattern recognition, which is a direct correlation to math and science. Music builds imagination and intellectual curiosity. For students that struggle academically or just can't fit in and find it difficult to fit in, music is often the bridge for these kids. It also allows for teamwork and self-confidence in alternative learning ways. I did my own due diligence and reached out to teachers in other districts that I know to see how much music education their students are receiving. I learned that West Orange is on par with other districts in the area, or slightly lower for others. And they are coming up with alternative solutions that don't involve cutting music or any of the arts. Most look towards PE and health departments, perhaps we should be doing the same. There are alternatives out there. I have heard repeatedly at Board of Ed meetings, read on the Board of Ed social media pages, about the high achievements in music for our high school students. Many of these students started their music education with our elementary schools. So why wouldn't you want this to continue, is the real question I have for you guys today. You are doing our children a disservice if you don't put the time in to find a better solution. Our students deserve better than just doing what may be easy at this moment. Thank you.
I'm Joe Romano. I teach instrumental music at Edison Central Six. This is my 26th year serving as an instrumental music teacher here in the wonderful town of West Orange. Being a veteran teacher, I can clearly remember what it was like teaching children in a climate of mutual respect, admiration, appreciation, and trust between teachers and administration. I say that because there is an unsettling feeling which permeates through the rank and file. Many of us, including myself, are fearful, speaking out in support of our exemplary music program. On March 19th, 2018, over a year ago, the board posted a message on the district website as a follow-up to community conversation. The message, still there, thanks everyone for speaking out at Board of Ed meetings in states, the board heard us very clearly. The board lists the community's collective needs and the board also lists their initiatives to begin the process of healing and strengthening their partnership with us. Here is one need expressed by the community. Quote, "Approaches as requested by parents, teachers, to heal our school community," end quote. And here is one of the board's initiatives. Quote, "Climate surveys for parents and teachers with safeguards for confidentiality and curtailing duplication," end quote. How can healing begin when a climate survey has not been implemented? If one were, the board would know the truth. This is why we still speak with fear of retribution. I recently learned our elementary vocal music program is being cut from meeting two days a week to meeting only one day. This is unfair to the children of West Orange. We have one of the best music programs in the state. Visit any music classroom or attend any concert and you'll know why. We are teaching children to be independent music learners, which is music literacy. Cutting instruction will reduce the critical time needed to cultivate a solid music foundation, which benefits every single child. For the second year in a row, West Orange has been nationally recognized as one of the best communities for music education. We are one of 33 out of almost 700 districts in New Jersey, holding that distinct honor. Our successful music program is the sum of talented and dedicated educators, along with support from the board, administration, and community. In closing, I ask one question. Why cut the roots from a healthy tree? There are solutions. There are other solutions. There are other solutions. Yes, a board member shaking her head. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Hi, Lou Kelly, High School. Dear Mr. Alper, Ms. Mordecai, Mr. Robertson, Ms. Merklinger, and Ms. Trig Scales, we, the music department of West Orange, are writing you with the hope that you will reconsider your decision to drastically reduce music instruction at the elementary level by 50%. This programming change will seriously impact the musical future of our students. This proposal is a grave mistake. As you have no doubt heard, there are other solutions to address West Orange's non-compliance with the health curriculum that would not have impacted music. At the elementary level, health is already scheduled in many schools as a classroom block, and there are blocks of intervention time that could be used for health as well. As a matter of fact, years ago, health was already scheduled in the elementary instructional day, with students receiving the same amount of non-content area instruction that they are currently receiving. It is imperative that you understand the unintended duplications of this extreme reduction in student contact time. The elementary music curriculum, which provides the foundation for the vocal and instrumental excellence for which we are known, will have to be revised. If you go ahead with this proposed change, who is going to rewrite this for September? Or more pointedly, if this hasn't been considered, which half of the curriculum should we use for instruction? Recorder instruction, which is vitally important to the development of beginning instrumentalists, will also be cut in half. It will only be a matter of time before this negatively impacts our current level of excellence at high school. While the scheduling changes have received the most attention, we feel it is also important to address some other issues with regards to cuts and our department. Our special needs students at Kelly will no longer be mainstreamed as a result of losing their second music position. Many special needs students benefit from mainstreaming and this loss of this type of program will be widely felt. That position also covered music for students at the Betty Medelena Preschool. Is music instruction being eliminated at our preschool? Additionally, by combining strings at the middle schools, in order to not hire a leave replacement for the high school strings teacher, the students at that level will not have access to the many additional programs that are offered, because the strings teacher will not be available before and after school in two places. While many would agree that Mr. Romellis has worked magic in the program he has developed at Liberty, he simply cannot magically divide himself into two parts to be in two places at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Romell. I teach instrumental music at Redwood and Washington Schools. I will be continuing the letter from the music department that Lou Kelly had started. On another note, the decision to remove funding for outside professional development will also adversely impact our department. Although the district provides many wonderful opportunities for content area teachers, those who are in specialized areas must go outside for this type of development. As you know, effective professional development enables educators to develop the knowledge and skills they need to address students' specific learning needs. The professional development that we have actively sought, we turnkey for our colleagues. An example of one highly effective PD was in December of 2015. Staff members from the high school band program traveled to the premier music conference in the world, the Midwest Band and Orchestra Clinic, which is held in Chicago for four days. The VPA department and high school contributed funds for both staff members to attend. Upon attending many clinics and concerts, staff members came back to West Orange to turnkey clinics and share their ideas. Staff members brought the idea of an instrument test drive back to the entire department. As a team, the instrumental music department decided to do a trial run where third graders could come try out the instruments they had the option of learning in fourth grade. This has proven to be a very successful initiative and one we would have loved to continue. However, due to the enormous efforts that go into making this day a success and the district's decision not to compensate staff, we are not providing this program this year. As we're sure you understand, the excellence that we have achieved at the high school level and the many accolades and awards that have accompanied this do not happen in a vacuum. For the second year in a row, we have been recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation as among the best communities for music education. This program honors schools and school districts for outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders, and their support for music education as part of the core curriculum. There is no doubt this will be the last year for this distinguished recognition when they learn that the elementary music program has now been cut in half. While there may be no actual way to quantify the positive impact that our music program has had in our community, the effects of dismantling the program will be tangible. We have seen these effects in communities where music programs have been cut or drastically limited, and we implore you to reconsider your decision before it's too late. There are other solutions. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Paul, Redwood School, currently teaching second grade. I'm here to speak about elementary scheduling. I just wanted to provide the board with a little historical information. When I began teaching in West Orange 18 years ago as a Spanish teacher, the elementary schedule included 60 minutes a week of music per grade, plus chorus for fifth grade, 45 minutes of library per grade, 45 minutes of art per grade, 60 minutes or 90 minutes of PE, depending on the grade, 30 minutes of health taught by a health professional, grades one through five, and later added for the entire year for K, and 30 minutes of Spanish for K and one, and 75 minutes of Spanish for grades two to five. We had it all. Since then, we have added minutes to the instructional day and lost some of those special area minutes. We lost 30 minutes of Spanish, grades two to five, resulting in 45 minutes a week. At that point, we lost faculty. We lost health taught by a health professional. At that point, we lost faculty. I truly appreciate the district reinstating health being taught by a health professional in light of the new law. However, we had that years ago and it all worked. We are now looking at the possibility of most of these special areas being cut in one way or another. And I have to repeat myself, that years ago, we had it all. Since the departure of Dr. Donna Rando, I have personally not been provided a district-mandated list of uniform minutes per subject area, but we have the same number of teaching minutes per week. Since then, the minute allocations have changed various times. Regardless, we had it all. We can definitely have it all again. Kevin Alvine, the PE supervisor, has apparently proposed a schedule that will allow us to have it all again. I urge you to consider this schedule for elementary. Please do not believe that an elementary schedule can't be created without losing time across various special areas. It can be done and it has been done. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Zimmerman and I'm a vocal music teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And I've been a music teacher in West Orange for 31 years. Music is a universal language, possibly the world's oldest language. It is a language that speaks to the senses and through them, to the heart and mind. Musical language has been spoken and understood by people of every time and culture since the dawn of history. Through music, children can learn to know themselves, share experiences, and relate their experiences to the world beyond the classroom. Music helps children become free in emotional response and free in their choice of ideas. At the same time, music teaches them the importance of hard work and practice, builds commitment to excellence, helps them learn patience, and provides valuable group process experiences. Young musicians acquire motor skills, hand-eye coordination, patience. Young musicians acquire motor skills, hand-eye coordination, patience, sensitivity, responsibility, and mastery of vocal and instrumental techniques. Research discoveries suggest that reading and performing music makes students smarter by challenging all parts of the brain to achieve their greatest possible neural activity. Recently, I had the privilege of attending the musical at Liberty Middle School, Beauty and the Beast. I got to see many of my former students onstage involved in the musical in some capacity, and they were wonderful. The biggest surprise of the night was when one of my former students, now a thirty-six-year-old man, approached me and said, "Mrs. Zimmerman, do you remember me?" And I did, with a little prompting. He proceeded to tell me how he still remembered and loved my music classes. Those comments made me feel wonderful, but more importantly, it speaks to the music program of West Orange and the impact it has on our students even many years later. So I implore you to take another look at these proposed cuts to our music program. There are other solutions. Please reconsider your decisions so we can continue to provide the students of West Orange a top-notch music education. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Palmeroy. I am the vocal music teacher at Edison Middle School. I have taught here in West Orange for fourteen years, eight years at Edison Middle School, and six years at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Nearly everyone enjoys music, whether by listening to it, singing, or playing an instrument. But despite this almost universal interest, your proposal is to reduce our music education program. This is a mistake, with our district not only reducing an enjoyable subject, but a subject that enriches students' lives and educations. NAFME, the National Association for Music Education, lists the following reasons why music is an important part of every child's education. Number one, musical training helps develop language and reasoning. Students who have early musical training will develop the areas of the brain related to language and reasoning. The left side of the brain is better developed with music, and songs can help imprint information on young minds. Two, a mastery of memorization. Even when performing with sheet music, student musicians are constantly using their memory to perform. The skill of memorization can serve students well in education and beyond. Three, students learn to improve their work. Learning music promotes craftsmanship, and students learn to want to create good work instead of mediocre work. This desire can be applied to all subjects of study. Four, increased coordination. Students who practice with musical instruments can improve their hand-eye coordination. Just like playing sports, children can develop motor skills when playing music. Five, a sense of achievement. Learning to play pieces of music on a new instrument can be a challenging but achievable goal. Students who master even the smallest goal in music will be able to feel proud of their achievement. Six, kids stay engaged in school. An enjoyable subject like music can keep kids interested and engaged in school. Student musicians are likely to stay in school to achieve in other subjects. Seven, success in society. Music is the fabric of our society, and music can shape abilities and character. Students in band, orchestra, or chorus are less likely to abuse substances over their lifetime. Musical education can greatly contribute to children's intellectual development as well. Eight, emotional development. Students of music can be more emotionally developed, with empathy towards other cultures. They also tend to have higher self-esteem and are better at coping with anxiety. Nine...
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleague will pick up where I left off. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Betsy Malaszewski. Thirty-one years ago, I helped start the string program in West Orange, and I've taught orchestra in every school except Liberty. Okay. Wow, yeah. Okay. Nine, students learn pattern recognition. Children can develop their math and pattern recognition skills with the help of music education. Playing music offers repetition in a fun format. Ten, better SAT scores. Students who have experience with music performance or appreciation score higher on the SAT. One report indicates sixty-three points higher on verbal and forty-four points higher on math. Eleven, fine-tuned auditory skills. Musicians can better detect meaningful, information-bearing elements and sounds, like the emotional meaning in a baby's cry. Students who practice music can have better auditory attention and pick out predictable patterns from surrounding noise. Twelve, music builds imagination and intellectual curiosity. Introducing music in the early childhood years can help foster a positive attitude towards learning and curiosity. Thirteen, music can be relaxing. Students can fight stress by learning to play music. Fourteen, musical instruments can teach discipline. Kids who learn to play an instrument can learn a valuable lesson in discipline. They will have to set time aside to practice and rise to the challenge of learning with discipline to master playing their instrument. Fifteen, preparation for a creative economy. Investing in creative education can prepare students for the twenty-first century workforce. Sixteen, development in creative thinking. Kids who study the arts can learn to think creatively. This kind of education can help solve problems by thinking outside the box and realizing that there may be more than one right answer. Seventeen, music can develop spatial intelligence. Students who study music can improve the development of spatial intelligence, which allows them to see the world accurately. It's helpful in advanced mathematics and more. Eighteen, kids can learn teamwork. Many musical education programs require teamwork as part of a band or orchestra. Nineteen, responsible risk-taking. Performing a musical piece can bring fear and anxiety. Doing so teaches kids how to take risks and deal with fear, which will help them become successful and reach their potential. And finally, twenty, better self-confidence. With encouragement from teachers and parents, students playing a musical instrument can build pride and confidence. Music education is also likely to develop better communication for students. There were other solutions. Please reconsider. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Krueger, music teacher at Liberty Middle School. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. First of all, the West Orange School District has become a major purpose of my existence. I've dedicated nearly half my life here, and I plan on staying here my entire career. In my eighteen years in West Orange, I've worked in seven of our twelve schools and with students in every grade, from pre-K to twelfth. I've gained a unique perspective of our music students' journey from here to graduation and beyond. Most community members only see the final product of our students' hard work, the fantastic performances. But their real education is the process, not the product. The foundation of our music curriculum is built on consistent musical experiences in the elementary years. Students must actively engage in the process of making music. Look at our K-8 music schedules and tell me if you think we have consistency. My student contact time has always decreased, and now we'll be expected to put on those same fantastic performances with less staff and less time at the most crucial level of development. The planned cuts to our program strike right at the heart of this critical foundation. These harmful actions might not affect our current administration or board members, but have you thought what it will do to the students and classroom teachers that have made a long-term commitment to our music program? Please seriously consider how the decisions you make tonight will impact the future of many people in this room and diminish the learning experience for young creative minds that never knew what they were missing. West Orange is home to world-class music industry professionals. Yet, an informed resident will tell you it's our school's music program that is the highlight of our arts community. The talented educators I work with, we're a team, and we're like family. We have a chemistry that's unlike any other department. It's special, and we should recognize that. It makes working in West Orange exciting. I share this joy with my students. Our music program achieves only by working closely together. These losses will change that dynamic and risk the integrity of what I put my blood, sweat, and tears into. Everyone here will eventually taste the recipe being made tonight. Parents and students have told me they chose West Orange public schools over private because of our performing arts program. We have successful music alumni all over the world. Now, I don't know what grades they earned. I don't know how they tested, but how do you measure creativity, teamwork, empathy, passion? How do we measure love? How do we measure what we're doing here tonight? And how do we measure those fantastic performances? Enclosure, please do not reduce music time or remove positions. Please do not destroy our foundation. Please, board members, don't let us down. There are other solutions. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you for listening.
Hi. My name is David Romelis, and I live at fifteen Eagle Terrace. I'm the father of a recent West Orange High School graduate. My son, John, when he was in pre-K, his mother and I both realized that he had some cognitive issues. He wasn't a quick learner, and he didn't get a lot of things right away. But one thing we did know, he could keep a beat, and he could carry a tune even when he was little. We were a little concerned about what was going to happen when he started school, but it wasn't long after he started school that he was scooped up by our beloved Mr. Perry. And Mr. Perry took him in, taught him to play the guitar, taught him how to sing, taught him to play the recorder, and so many other basic musical skills, and really made him feel at home at Redwood School, where he was. And when Mr. Perry was just about finished with my son, John, he handed him off to Mr. Robinson, who started him on the clarinet. And Mr. Robinson then became his next musical mentor and took up right where Mr. Perry left off. And when Mr. Robinson was finished, he passed him off to Mr. Romano, and Mr. Romano did the same thing. And then on to Mr. Gitter and Mr. Krueger, and finally on to Ms. Legotic and Mr. Kelly. And by the time my son, John, got to the high school, I'll tell you, being in the marching band and being in the other bands at West Orange High were really the only reason he went to school, because there weren't a lot of other things he had going for him at West Orange High. I mean, he barely made it through with tutors and other things like that, but he made it. And a lot of the reasons he made it were because of all these wonderful teachers that had him and took him along and made him feel special for what he did have and what he could do. And I am so thankful, and I've said it to these teachers that I know, how thankful I am for all they did for my son. And I am thankful for the music program here in West Orange. And I just want to say that it's one of the most important things you have going for you here at West Orange. Please, please, preserve it. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Manuel Amante. I live in nine Marshall Street. Some of you might know me by thorough conversation because I'm the individual who spearheaded the big fifty-one-foot trailer that we just purchased for the marching band. And I thank you, the board, for getting on board with that and making that a reality. Let me start off by sort of way back before we even got into this music program. My son got into the music program because of the drive. When he got that clarinet and he got into the music, that was one concern that we had going into high school, is what is he going to do? He's not athletic. He's not. He doesn't play baseball. He doesn't play soccer. He doesn't play anything else, but he loves music. And when he got into high school, he wanted to join the marching band. Now, as any other parent would know, it's a big commitment. And so he joined. And his first freshman year when he joined, when he went into that camp, let me tell you, PE, yeah, it was there that week. It taught every kid how to march. You try marching for fifteen minutes, that's PE for you right there. When he came back, he cried. You know, he didn't want to get up. Every muscle on his body was hurting. But at the end of that camp, let me tell you, he was hooked, and I was hooked. With Mr. Kelly and all the teachers there, I was so hooked that his first trip was to Disney World. I volunteered to drive the truck down to save the town, $7,000 in drivers and costs. I said, "I'll do it," because that's how much I thought that this program was important for the kids. And it was one of the best experiences because when we were in the backstage of the lot, one of the kids who didn't know me just came up to say, "I love you, man." And at that point, I said I was hooked. And most of these teachers know I volunteer for everything, so much so that I became vice president. Next year, I'm going to become president of this organization. On top of that, I made a cost to make a fifty-one-foot trailer to save the town even more money because everything that I saw, there had to be a way for us to save money so we can allocate that money to other programs for the music to reduce spending. You know, you've heard a lot from everyone here. I'm not going to be literal, but you know, it's, music is important. When I was in high school, we didn't have it. I wrestled, that's what we had. But now, being involved in music and being so involved that anything that I do for this town, for the kids, is unbelievable. When you go to the football games, not that I'm saying any other, you know, sport is bad, but it was amazing to me at the first freshman year and in this year, and the stands were packed. They start to play. They're done, and they leave. I said, "What about the game?" "No, it's the music." I go to other, you know, high schools, and everyone is just speaking, "Man, you guys, you guys are running a show. You guys are just bad. You guys are really good. You guys are..." It's amazing. Even the other organizations within our town come to us and say, "How are you guys doing it? Because you have the community behind us. You have major businesses behind us, and everyone is willing to give to the community through music." Oh.
Hello. Robin Berkowitz, sixty-nine Windy Way and St. Cloud teacher. I teach third grade. I do not teach music. I can't read a note. I can't play an instrument. I can't sing. I can't clap a beat, but my third graders can. And I agree with everything that was said before me, so I'm not going to repeat it all. I'm actually here to personally invite the Board of Ed members and our superintendent to the St. Cloud third-grade recorder concert. That is Thursday, March, May twenty-third at nine fifteen. Our third-grade students, under the direction of our amazing music teacher, Marina Resnikov, have learned to play the recorder, I mean, really play the recorder. They read notes, and they have also composed their own variations of certain songs. They actually are performing eleven songs, and then each of the three classes is performing their own created composition. So I know Thursday is difficult. It's nine fifteen in the morning. I'm sure you have something else to do. I will be recording it for you so I can send it to you. I've been teaching at St. Cloud for thirty years. I've been at third grade for twenty years. And every year, apparently, I have been told that I say the same thing at the end of the concert. Oh my goodness, that was the best one yet. I cannot imagine that next year's concert will be comparable at all to anything that came before it if you cut their music instruction by fifty percent. It is because of the instruction they get in third grade that feeds into their instrumental learning in fourth and fifth, which feeds into what we see in sixth, seventh, eighth, and later on. So again, as everyone, somebody had said before me, is I don't understand why we would be considering cutting our music program. There is time in our schedule. Thirty minutes can be found... 30 minutes is, can be found and it should be found. And as I guess somebody else said, I don't understand why we are cutting the roots of a healthy tree. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Carol Anne Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. I was not sure I was going to speak tonight because I haven't been able to make a Board of Ed meeting in a long time. And so I wasn't sure if I really, do I deserve to be here? You guys are here putting in the hard work all the time. And then I realized, as I raced from my youngest son's performance in Maplewood tonight, that I had to be here. And now that I've listened to everything the teacher said, I have to speak. We love to crow about the gem that is our high school music program. It is amazing. We are very lucky to have it. But it started in kindergarten. If we want to be able to crow in 10 or 12 years about what a great program we have, we need to take care of the kindergarteners. My youngest is at Edison. 10 or 12 years from now, I may have moved out of the district. Who knows? But we need to support those kids. I am, I wrote a ton of notes and they're really disorganized. They need to have it twice a week. The relationships are key. I am the mother of three twice exceptional kids. One of them is on the autism spectrum. Jackie Doherty, when every other teacher in Gregory School thought my son was a horrendous kid, Jackie Doherty in kindergarten and 1st grade got him. She was the one person I heard good things from about. Ms. Malachewski, his orchestra teacher, was the other one. They built relationships with him. My youngest has Tourette. It shows as a chronic cough which started in kindergarten. He was repeatedly sent home. Guess the one place that he didn't tick? Jackie Doherty's music in kindergarten. We talk about emotional wellness. All three of them have issues. All three of them have found solace in music. The relationship with that teacher is part of the key. And if you're taking the teachers out of the school for even more time, we're going to lose that. And now I'm losing math. We just had a big presentation on math. We had a neuropsychopath on my middle because he's going through a chronic illness and we're trying to figure out how to help him. His math scores were off the charts. I'm sure that's because of music. And I'm going to leave out a bunch of stuff. One of the things that got him to school, we've been told for months, put him on homebound. The one thing that got him to school was not wanting to let down his bandmates, his teacher, but even more so his bandmates. And I know when my time is up, the last thing, I am heartbroken, I've shown you why the special needs kids need it. The 3rd grade instrument was the very best thing for both my youngest, who was the only one who got to try them out, for my middle, who got the leadership skills of helping the younger kids. And also, the enrichment program is amazing. Sorry I was so disorganized. Please, 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 keep this gem of West Orange. We have a lot of problems. This one is not one of them. Let's not make it one.
I'm a 10th grader in the West Orange High School. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm in the, I'm in the marching band and there's a great community there. It feels like family. But there's one thing that, there's one memory I have from elementary school at Redwood Elementary School that, it's a song that we learned in music class. It's, the lyrics were, "Tina singu lavatayo, wacha, wacha, wacha." And I remember that our teacher, Mr. Perry, told us this story about how it was about a wildfire in the forest. And I just remember that so vividly. But it's not just my memory. It's so many people that went to the same school as I. So many people have that same memory and sometimes people will start singing that song. People will sing the song together, like friends. And it's, and it like just brings up, brings back so many memories. And we all have different individual memories of elementary school, like of math class and science class and, you know, those individual memories. But that's the one collective memory that we all share so often and that we like share through song. And it's a really beautiful thing. And I think to take away that form of community that we had even at just such a young age, like even if only part of it's taken away, it's just, you won't have, you won't have people in high school singing the same songs that they sing in elementary school. You won't have people singing together. They'll just have those individual memories. They won't have the collective memory that brings them together. I know that was very short, but thank you.
Anyone further for public comment? No, seeing none.
There is no doubt that there is an amazing inherent value in our music program. There is no doubt that it is acknowledged and recognized as one that is superior across our state. It is very difficult to look at our budget and look at our schedule and look at our time and make decisions that would incorporate all of the things that we're required to For each area of this budget that we've had to present, as difficult as it may be, each of the groups have come to, with courage and with conviction, advocate for your areas. I appreciate it. Thank you. I understand that this is a very special area for all of our teachers. It has and continues to have great impact on our students. For each area, there is advocacy. And for each area, we have to make a decision on how we can fit in all of the things that we're required to fit. It is not with a smile or with joy that we look to our schedule to say, "How are we going to meet all of our mandates?" Knowing that we may have to reduce some. So when we think about all of the content area that we must teach, including health, including music, art, library, all of them, we have to do our best to equitably distribute the amount of time that we have with our students. If we're going to extend our school day, Board of Ed, then that's something that we could try to do to increase our minutes. If we're going to look into our schedule to say where these 30 minutes are that do not increase preps or sacrifice intervention or any other programs, we can look for solutions. We can. We can look for solutions. But for each solution that's presented, when it hits another program, there's going to be a sacrifice made somewhere. Somewhere there's going to be a sacrifice made and then we'll be with that group of advocacy and respectfully so. I get it. So we'll go back to the table. After the budget has struck, now we'll go back to the table for scheduling. We'll revisit the conversations on the house and if something can be done to create the least amount of sacrifice across all of the areas, then we'll do that. Then we will do that gladly. It cannot be done though with just saying, you know, lose this or lose A or lose B because all of the groups are going to advocate for their areas, all of them. They're all important. They're all very, very important. Music is very important. And right now, we also have to think about health. We also have to think about that. Whether other schools are in compliance or not, they can't be our standard of non-compliance, right? We have to be accountable for West Orange. I have to be accountable for West Orange. And so we have to move toward compliance as well. I think that's it.
You know, I would echo that. I would absolutely thank the parents, the teachers, the student who spoke with such passion. You know, your words are important, we hear them. You know, I wish that there were another 30, 60 minutes in the school day. I know I'm dreaming, but I wish there were, you know, and hopefully, sorry? No, we're not going to do back and forth, but I wish we had more time. You know, I hope we can, you know, find something in the schedule and find 3 minutes here and 3 minutes there, times 10, times 5, times something. You know, maybe there's something in the scheduling that can be done, I hope there is. But I know how difficult it is and that we're striking a balance and that we have to fit in so many things, including, I think, so many things we didn't have to fit in so many years ago, that just makes it a real challenge. So, I thank you. With that, Board member reports? We'll start with Ms. Triggs Gales.
I too would like, just to thank all of the music educators and parents. It's not easy being on the board and making tough decisions. So please know that we recognize excellence in our music program. We truly, truly do. When I worked in Montclair, and if you know anything about Montclair's music program, it pales in comparison. And when we were looking for a world-class music program to emulate, we looked here at West Orange. And so I personally have a great respect for what you do and I know that collectively the board does as well. Tough decisions that we have to make. On a lighter note, I'd like to acknowledge our Green West Orange, which partnered with one of our Roosevelt Middle School students, two of our Roosevelt Middle School students, Randy Stevens, who was the event developer, and Greg Rysik, who was the chief digger. And I know you're wondering, what was that about, the chief digger? It was an honors project led by their teacher, Ms. Bush. The Project Trees for Seniors, and yes, I will admit that I am one of those. I don't usually do that, but I'm a proud, a proud senior. The Project Trees for Seniors gifted saplings to township seniors to acknowledge every generation's obligation to make a positive lifestyle change on our environment. And I thank you for my tree, which was a pinochle. And it reminds me, it's about this tall, and I was told that it could be 40 feet tall. And so it reminds me of a little baby with such great potential for growth. And so as we're talking about the music program and you're talking about not cutting the roots, it's very relevant as I talk about Trees for Seniors. On the other hand, I wanted to, it's been six months, Cheryl and I have been on the board for six months now, right? Five, six, maybe almost seven? And somewhere back in, I think it was November or December, when we were acknowledging the Kindness Challenge with our students, Kindness Week, I presented a kindness challenge to my board members. And I just wanted to give you an update. I think we will collectively say we're doing very well. Don't look like that. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. So I think we've been working very well together. Please know that we have very passionate discussions and disagreements. However, they are polite and they're professional and we all know why we're here. So as much as we may have personal interests, we know that we're here for our students, our staff, our parents, our community. And so I just wanted to commend my staff members. We've done very well up to this point and I know that we will continue to set an example. Why are you staring at me like that, Mark?
Thank you, Ms. Triggs Gales. I want an A in this course.
We're on the continuum, but I just wanted to take the time to thank my fellow board members. It's been a wonderful experience up to this point. Thank you very much.
Wasn't sure what order you're going in. Okay. I want to add my thanks to all the music educators and other educators and parents and students who came forward tonight to talk about the music program. Yes, we have the best in New Jersey and yes, it does start from kindergarten, from preschool. So thank you very much for your comments. And as Ms. Mendez said, you know, we will keep looking. And unfortunately, when you're looking to, to make sure everything fits, there's going to be some sacrifice. And when we moved to block scheduling several years ago, this is what it looks like. So to find extra minutes in the day in a block schedule is going to be a challenge. And maybe that's something we need to review as a board. Maybe it is the block scheduling that we have to adjust, but it's a discussion that we have to have as a board to make sure that we're in compliance for phys ed and health, but also to make sure that our, that all our students get music. And as Mrs. Holland said, you know, there's so many other benefits. Two E kids, and another parent said it as well, I think Mr. Romulus. A lot of kids go to school for football or some athletic event, but a lot of kids also just come to school for music. So it's, it's going to be tough, but we will work hard at it. I'd like to thank Ms. Maritza Brown for coming forward to talk about her nonprofit organization. You have been working with the district for a few years now and I've seen the fruits of your efforts. I've seen a lot of kids getting scholarships for financial literacy. And as it's now a mandate for 6th through 8th grade, it was a graduation requirement, I think, under Governor Christie a couple of years ago. So we already had it in place at the high school and we brought that down to the middle school, but now it's a mandate for 6th to 8th grade as well. So thank you for all you're doing with your organization. Couple more reports. I attended the New Jersey School Board Association and the New Jersey PTA Legislative Day last week, along with a council of PTA member back there, Ms. Tonakliff. And it was a very, very long day. We had to schlep down to Trenton, be there by 8:30 in the morning. And quite a few legislators spoke on the panel, Assemblywoman Mala J.C. and a few others. Carrie Booker, the brother to Senator Cory Booker, was one of the speakers as well. He is the educational advisor to the governor. So he talked about, and I don't know how we'll fit this into our school day, he talked about preschool through community college and looking at high school students graduating with a diploma and an associate's degree. So that's where we're going in New Jersey education-wise. A lot of other things came up as well, but those were, those are some of the things that stood out for me. I also attended the County School Board Association meeting two weeks ago. That was my last meeting as the county association president. And I was very happy and proud to hand this certificate to Board President Ken Alper. He has done all his hard work on the Board, Board Academy. And Mrs. Triggs Gales was also present. And it was a really nice moment for us to stand there, you know, with Ken beaming, you know. As a first-term board member, it's really tough to get all your credits within the first couple of years. So I'm glad that you're continuing to set that tone, that we as a board also do professional development, not just the teachers in the district, but also board members. So congratulations, Mr. Alper. Thank you. That's all I have.
First, I just want to say thank you to all the music teachers and teachers who spoke. Mrs. Pomeroy, Mrs. Zimmerman, Mr. Romano, Mrs. Malachewski, Mr. Krueger, and I'm probably missing something, somebody. You've helped my kids to grow. You've helped my kids to develop. You've helped my kids to develop. And Mr. Creer recently in Beauty and the Beast, you know, got into spend, had the opportunity to spend some time with you and, and just watching Joelle grow. I asked Joelle, once she first started getting into musical theater, what she got out of it. And this was actually when she started in fourth grade and she told me, says, well daddy, I have a hard time talking in front of people and I don't feel self-confidence. And sometimes it's easier to sing. And I also like working together with other kids and folks to put together a production. And that was a lot of fun and I felt, you know, felt something really good from that. I've seen her grow in confidence, happiness, friendships around it, improved communication, sense of teamwork, a greater sense of poise. It's been very, very tangible. And, and I know as we're going through all the, in the weeds with the budget, I think we have to be careful not, not to cut some of the flowers in the garden. It's 15 minutes. We went from the two 30-minute segments down to one 45-minute segment. 15 minutes is a lot for a little kid. So it's a long time and to Ms. Budloni's point, with a class it takes, you lose about 10 minutes just getting their attention, a lot of time. And it's, you know, music is critical to our children's development and you've listed all the wonderful ways from, you know, cognitive development to emotional development. I'm not going to reiterate all that, but it's true. And I believe that in the midst of going through all the budget stuff, I can say personally, I feel I've made a mistake. Not that, I think we need to take a second look at this. I do believe I need to better understand what the mandates are. I need to better understand what solutions were on the table and you have awakened me. I'd also say, I wish you would advocate on another issue that I've raised here regarding music. In seventh and eighth grade, kids are forced to choose between either music or art and STEM. Right? And, and then by eighth grade, by eighth grade, they have to choose music or art or STEM. So if you're good in science and if you love music, if you love art, so my daughter who was in the, in the gifted group for art in fifth grade, had to choose and she loves singing, right? And she's also honors science and she loves STEM. She's like, but daddy, what do I do? I was like, this is a ridiculous choice. American innovation comes from the ability to combine the arts with science, with math, with those elements, is bringing that together that innovation comes from. And so advocate for that as well because I am. Before schedules are set for the fall, there's got to be a better way. There's got to be a better way for elementary school. There's got to be a better way for middle school and these are choices that children should not have to make. And if they love, they have a passion for these things, they're all good for their development. They need to be able to embrace all of them and all of them are preparing them for high school. If you're going into IMS, that STEM, STEM is going to help you. If you are going to participate in chorus or band, and Mr. Kelly, I haven't had a kid in band, but I gotta say, when I go to the football games, I actually spend as much time hanging out in, in the band section and with the pit crew as I do around the football team. So, you know, I love what we do. I love what we've created, this culture we've created and I'm going to advocate for it. I'm going to ask that my colleagues and I and Ms. Mendez, who I know works very hard, this is not to in any way besmirch the hard work that went into the budget, but I think we made a mistake. I think we made it a 15-minute mistake that is more than 15 minutes in the life of a child. And Mr. Alper, I think we need to challenge ourselves on another front that somebody reminded us about. We had these wonderful board goals to heal and to reconnect. We have not executed them. We haven't executed the climate survey. We haven't executed the town hall meeting. Ms. Merklin and I are trying to get to, get around to with all this other stuff, executing one of the committees that's associated with that, Community Relations Committee, but we got to actually follow through on these things. They were there for a reason. They were there for real, real issues. So I challenge us to get back to it and to actually, you know, put a pin on it, put it, put in there and on the calendar and say, this is what we're going to do. And last but not least, you know, I always come back to this, when it comes down to money that we need, there actually are music grants out there, but I'm not going to, you're not going to bang that, you know, that, that hammer too much. But I just want to thank you for helping my children to grow and develop and, and being such a wonderful part of their lives. Mr. Creer, I look forward to, you know, spending time as the drama papa, you know, with you and the, and the crew next year. Thank you. Two quick things, two really quick things. Track and field, our girls' track Essex County Track and Field Championship, it was amazing. They crushed, they killed it. It was exciting to watch and just want to congratulate Coach Blake, Coach Jackson, all the coaches. The boys fought hard, had a rough day, so I watched the nine Alex, they're racing hard. It was tough. Armani and Dylan and Jumpin', it was tough. But Elena Chant, Tyra, Tiara, Kayla and Abigail were standouts and they were amazing. ROTC awards, I'm not going to go through all the names and stuff, but what an incredible night and I just want to congratulate, you know, we have not only, people don't know, we tied a military school for the most kids accepted to West Point in the state of New Jersey. We tied them. We beat them for the most kids early acceptance and Vanessa Lutman made history as the first West Point girl ever accepted to West Point. First West Orange girl ever accepted to West Point. So it was an amazing night. There were a lot of great awards from Geo Trinidad's to, I'm not going to go through the list, but we have some amazing kids. And by the way, a lot of them were in band as well as in athletics and so many other things. So we have this amazing, well-rounded group of achievers and I was so proud of all of them as well as proud of my son participating in that. And I'll let my colleagues talk. It was really an amazing week between West Orange Chamber honoring Teacher of the Year and I'll let you talk about that and Girls on the Runs Award Breakfast. I mean, it was, we were celebrating girls, we were celebrating our kids and it was at our, at our teachers and it was a really, really, really wonderful week. I just want to thank you. Oh, I forgot, Ms. Brown, people don't realize that Maritza Brown, your program, your core program, not only awarded scholarships to our kids, but they literally changed the dynamics in some of the families where the parents and the kids together were reevaluating their bills and their monthly payments on stuff. And kids, families started 529 plans or you helped them start 529 plans and it changed the dynamics in families. And then you rewarded them beyond that by giving scholarships to kids who finished the program. It was a perfect concert with our new personal finance efforts and we should do everything possible to help you keep doing this and working in partnership with you. Thank you. That's it.
So I echo the sentiments of my colleagues about the music program. Part of why, if you go and play back the Board of Ed meeting, part of why I voted against the budget was because I didn't agree with some of the decisions being made about our music and health programs. I grew up in West Orange. I don't know how we did it, but when I was in elementary school, we had health, music, art and all my core subjects. I didn't miss out on anything. I was very fortunate. So I do think that there is, I think there are some options out there that we should consider from what I'm hearing, that there is the ability to fit in health, which is extremely important, believe me. I am a big proponent of phys ed. Everyone knows I'm into sports. So I think there's definitely the room for that. No other district in our area meets the 150-minute criteria, so I think we need to look at what other areas, what other districts are doing without cutting music. Obviously, you know, in sports, our youth programs are feeder programs for our high school. It's the same in elementary school for music. So I would hate to see us cut even 15 minutes or 30 minutes from that program. And I do think we have opportunities and I would look forward and challenge us as a board to hear what those other options are and what's on the table. I just think it needs more discussion. I don't think a decision's been made yet, not one that I'm aware of at least, but I think it's still up for discussion and something that we have to really consider. I mean, we cut jobs and staff to make the budget, so I echo what I said before in the budget meeting. If we're going to make cuts like that, then we need to reconsider the programs and not make sure our students have what they need. So with that, I, I challenge everyone that we reevaluate what's going on. My son is one of those students who is, had to choose between art and STEM. And, you know, Mr. Romano was my brother and my sister, my younger brother and my younger sister. He was their teacher, so I know how important music is. So I just, like I said, I think we need to reconsider that and take all things into consideration before we finalize any scheduling for the next year. That's just something I personally believe in and something that I'm going to support that we continue to look at. With that, I do want to congratulate our girls' track team in the Essex County Relays and all the folks that were involved with that. There were a lot of teachers up there supporting our, our program. I want to congratulate Ron Bligh, he was named Athletic Director of the Year by the Super Essex Conference and Essex County Athletic Directors. I don't know if everyone knows this, but in 2018, he was also recognized for having the number one girls' athletic program in Essex County. And I feel bad because Sisina is not here, but she was recognized as one of the scholar athletes of West Orange High School also at that meeting, along with Moriel Casher for wrestling. And that's a very distinct award. I was fortunate enough to receive that from my high school in the same manner for track. So I, I hope, you know, next time we can recognize Sisina when she's here for that distinguished award. I want to recognize Tyler Gallatini for winning the Group Four North Section One Golf State Tournament. He did really well. He actually finished fifth overall for Groups One and Two as well. Our girls' softball, our boys' baseball and our lacrosse program, boys and girls, both finished up and had great seasons and I hope some of you got to go out to those games. I want to recognize Kevin Riley, who's retired after 34 years or is retiring after 34 years and he's one of our PE teachers. But I want to also, you know, reach out to our alumni and our retirees, let us know what you're doing, keep us updated on what's going on. I want to recognize Shakai Carson, who is, who won some awards for his football skills at the Future Phenom Showcase this past weekend. Praga Praminta was recognized in the Congressional Art Show Awards. She placed second for mixed media, the mixed media category. While we're on the topic of music, the music awards were tonight. Our Thespian Society had their inductees ceremony the other evening as well. Let's see what else. We've got a lot going on. May 29th, Liberty, the West Orange High Dance Program is putting on a show. It's choreographed and showcased by, choreographed and run by our students 100%. So it's a showcase that they're going to be doing at Liberty next week. And then, oh, the Legacy Walkway, if you haven't already gotten your brick, make sure you get one of those out here on the pathway. I know we just finished up Allergy Week, so I'm curious to hear how everything went. I know we had a lot of events planned at the school, so at our index meeting, I'm hoping we can get some updates about what took place. And I also just want to say, everyone enjoy, we don't have a meeting until afterwards, but enjoy your Memorial Day weekend, enjoy Monday being off. I want to thank all our servicemen and women out there and recognize our ROTC program. I think they're actually going to be part of the recognition on Monday morning at Town Hall. So everyone have a great weekend.
And my only note is, most of us were able to attend the Chamber of Commerce last Monday night for the Educator of the Year Award, Kimmy Jackson from Redwood. And that was fantastic to be able to honor her. Congratulations to her. That was a great night. And that is all. Next board meeting will be held at 8:00 PM on June 3rd, I believe, in the auditorium because that'll be the Parade of Honors. I guess we're keeping the name. I haven't thought of anything else. We'll see you there.
Mr. President, I have one follow-up. Mr. Mendez, I forgot to ask, what is going on with the Hazel Principal update for the search for the new principal?
Okay, so we have completed various rounds of interviews for different candidates. We are going to go back out. We will post and go back out for the Hazel Principalship.
Okay, wonderful. I know Hazel Parent asked me to make sure I followed up with you, so thank you for that.
All right. May have a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion.
All right.